We are gonna start the meeting. It is seven o'clock and we do have a big agenda. We have a lot of presentations, so I want to get started. It is, welcome to Ojai City Council and Ojai Development Agency, Successor Agency, regular meeting, 7:00 PM, July 14, 2015. Sherry, could I have roll call?
Council members Wyrick?
Here.
Clapp?
President.
Lara?
Here.
Blatz?
Here.
Heaney?
Here. And could Councilmember Clapp lead us on the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to everybody for which I stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everybody. Today, we are gonna start with some presentations. The first one is a certificate appreciation to Danae LaRose, Office Specialist, City of Ojai. She thought she was gonna get out or be able to leave for retirement quietly, but she's -- her beautiful smile when you enter City Hall has definitely already been missed. And I wanted to make sure that we do give her the correct send-off. I'm gonna ask anybody that wants to say a couple of words to come up. I'm gonna start with Bill Miley, and then I will invite the council for any further comments before I present to her our plaque. So, Mr. Miley.
Good evening, Bill Miley. I've been calling the city for a long time, and when I get the recording, I hear Danae's voice. And it's become the voice of the city. So, and it's a smile. It just makes me feel so great. And then if I want to talk to somebody else, I press "O," and she comes on. And it's again, she's smiling. I can just see her face smiling. So, I would like to recommend that the city council record her or recognize her as the voice of the city with certificate. And one of my friends suggested, who's in the movie business, that there'd be consideration of royalties. So, every time the recording plays, it's a penny. And over the years, she gets a check and such. And the city guaranteed that that voice will remain for a number of years. So, thank you. And I'm sorry to see her go, but I'm happy that the voice is still there. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else in the public wishing to make comment? Yes, Mr. Eiker? And if you could please state your name for the record.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. Scott Eiker with the Ojai Valley Chamber of Commerce. I come to City Hall for a number of reasons over the years, and every time I see Danae, and as Mr. Miley said, she always has a smile on her face, and it's -- I have a smile on my face because normally I'm coming to City Hall to pick up a check that's coming. And she's always there to give it to me. And not only that, but I can lean close to Danae and say something very inappropriate, and she'll laugh, which is always fun. But we're gonna miss her sorely. It is just, it's a passing, it's a changing of the guard, and I wish her, I wish her well. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, Mr. Lewinson.
I was Danae's supervisor for the last six months since I came here to the city, and I just wanted to say thank you. I would sit there in my office, and her, you know, the receptionist is just outside my door, so I would hear her talk all the time, and how she talked with people. And I commented on so many occasions what a wonderful person she was as a receptionist for the city, because she was truly a wonderful face for the city. She said, she always was chipper and happy, like they all said, but she was able to diffuse situations. She was able to very nicely deal with some tough, tough things, and just get along with everybody in City Hall. And she'd get to know all their names and the people that would come in all the time. So, I just want to say thank you. She did a fantastic job in that area, and we will truly miss that. And she's just, she really, truly is, you know, a wonderful communicator and the voice of the city. Thank you.
Anybody else? No? With that, I'll invite any of the councilmembers. If not, then I, again, I just want to let you know how much we appreciate you, Danae, and if you don't mind coming up and receiving your plaque, and I don't know if you want to say a couple of words.
Hello, how can I help you?
I appreciated the candy bowl. You always had candy.
And Council, and City of Ojai, and all the citizens. I don't have much to say, but I'm very appreciative for the tile, and it looks like flowers. It's way too much. But I'm very happy, and I'll be sorry to leave this family. They're wonderful coworkers to be with, and everybody supported everybody. So, it was genuinely a very good family, and I'll miss it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Everybody.
Our next presentation is Southern California Association of Government. Mr. Joseph Briglio is gonna give us a presentation of who SCAG is. We hear a lot about SCAG, and we usually don't see a face behind there, but this time, we invited him, and I've been gracious, because he's actually invited me to some of the events of SCAG. And Joseph actually grew up here in Ojai. He was a good soccer player. He went through all the elementary school, junior high, and high school here. So, he's actually somebody more than just a representative. He's also a local.
I'm a product of the Ojai Unified School District. Thank you so mu -- yeah, thank you. There's a clap. It's an honor to be here. It's also a bit strange, as the mayor said, it's, this is a homecoming for me. I have a memory just about on every single street, except I don't have a memory from this council chamber, as telling the city manager earlier. So, tonight's my first night here. Thank you for inviting me. I know many, many of you. Your faces are familiar, which is great. For those that I don't know, I look forward to getting to know you a little bit more and working with you in the future. I know you have a huge agenda and a lot to go, so I'll try to be brief. Key word is "try." But I'll go through these as quick as possible. So, what I'm gonna do tonight is give you a very basic overview of what SCAG is and what we do. And it's about as far as I'll take you. If you want to get technical, I'm not your guy. I'm not your guy to get super-technical, but we have staff that can get very technical. So, with that, I'll jump into it. Again, my name is Joseph Briglio. I'm the Regional Affairs Officer for the Southern California Association of Government. We're also known as SCAG. That's actually what we're mostly known as, is SCAG, which is not, people kind of cringe when I say SCAG, because I have a number of other things, but it just doesn't sound pleasant. But that's our acronym, for better, for worse. That's what it is. So, I'm from SCAG. So, we're gonna jump right in and say, what is SCAG? For many of you, you have no idea. You've probably never even heard of us, never, we're not even on your radar. For those that do know about us, you probably think we're a little bit like Dr. Evil. We're this big shadow, shadowy government that's trying to impose our will on the little guy. But that can be farther, further from the truth. What we really are is, at the state level, we're a joint powers authority, we're a regional transportation planning agency, we're in a council of government. On the federal side of things, we're a metropolitan planning organization. So what? What's that mean? If you're gonna take away anything tonight, I hope you take away these two bullet points for what SCAG actually is. SCAG is a long-range regional planning and policy agency, period. That's what we do. Plans and policy. We don't do any implementation. You, the local jurisdictions, do implementation. So, counties and cities are the ones that implement our plans. So, again, long-range regional planning and policy agency. And how do we do that? Well, we convene a very large regional forum to discuss major issues throughout Southern California. And thankfully, we have your mayor, actually, on one of our policy committees, who helps to share Ventura County issues, Ojai issues, regionally now. And so, Ojai's voice, Ventura County's voice is heard on a number of different levels. But there's no other body like us. There's no other government body that's bringing together an entire region to discuss really what's important to Southern Californians, really what's impacting Southern Californians. It's, it's hard enough to do, to deal with the city next to us. It's, there's, rarely do we get to discuss things with Ventura, or Santa Paula, or Fillmore. But what SCAG really does well is get everyone to the table and discuss how one city impacts the next, how one county impacts the next. I've talked to folks before and said, why, from Ventura Counties, or why do, why are we connected to LA County? We want, why can't we just be our own thing? And the truth is, is that the migration patterns between LA and Ventura, we want to be part of that big behemoth down there, because they impact us greatly up here. So, we need to be part of that conversation, and be having that conversation with those folks and not separate. So, what are the issues that we deal with? Well, here's, these are not all of the issues, but they're just some of them. Our bread and butter, our meat and potatoes, our peanut butter and jelly is transportation and housing. We are first and foremost, and forever will be, a transportation and housing planning agency. Of course, with transportation and with housing and land use comes goods movement, so moving products from point A to point B, air quality, land use issues, how do we, how do we develop? How do we build housing? Funding, we do a big part, a big push for funding. So, what SCAG does for local agencies and for our region is we lobby at Sacramento, we lobby at Washington DC, and we try to bring transportation dollars, housing dollars, back to local jurisdictions. Not only that, from a very broad point of view, but also, as an agency, we have grants that are available to our member cities like Ojai for affordable housing projects, for sustainability projects, for active transportation projects. And they're, they're on different cycles, so they're not all happening at the same time, but if you're interested, please contact me. So, we are a funding resource for local cities. Water is a huge issue. It's pretty much, none of these issues matter without water. But that's becoming the regional issue that we're discussing at SCAG, and it's gonna become more and more a part of the conversation. And lastly, but not least, is long-range growth forecasts. So, we, we deal a lot with data. We are big into data and information research in developing these plans. We have an immense amount of information that we've collected from all different types of sources, federal, state, private, county, to even the local level. And the way, the reason we do that, the reason we mine so much data and information is because, again, we're in, we're in regional planning. And regional planning is also a visionary process, so we're planning 20 years into the future, and in order to do that correctly, you kind of have to know where you're standing, where you want to go, what the barriers are today, and what the barriers of tomorrow are gonna be. So, we have a whole group dedicated to doing the research and figuring out what's going on right now, and what's the future going to look like. And I mention that because it not only works as, from our agency standpoint, but it also works for you. So, what SCAG creates every two years are these local profiles, and that's some of the content, but it's basically statistical information at the local level. So, it's great for technical background, and if you guys are creating reports, or just want to know more about your jurisdiction, from population, household, commuters, where, where's your workforce going? Where's it coming from? It's, it's all in the local profile. It's available to you on our website. I brought a hard copy in black and white. If you want color, just ask me, and I'll have LA send you some. But again, I encourage you all to grab that, because it's really good information. Lastly, with what SCAG does is, most people know us for two primary products. Again, it's not what we do only, but this is why people know us. They know us primarily because we create a regional transportation plan and sustainable community strategy, the RTPSCS. And forgive me for this terrible PowerPoint slide right here, it's all wordy. We're gonna get into a little bit of government ease in a second, but you, people know us for the RTPSCS, as well as the RENA, which is somewhat of a bad word in certain communities, but it is what it is. We, a lot of folks know us for our regional housing needs assessment, which is, what happens roughly eight years, and is connected to every city's housing element. I know that you have, you're talking about housing later tonight. If you want to talk more about RENA, I can be dangerous, but I'm probably not the best person to talk to from the SCAG standpoint. I was also an affordable housing planner for a while, so I do know a little bit about what you guys are dealing with. So, that's a little bit of what we do. So, who, who is SCAG? Who actually is the face of SCAG? Who embodies us? That's for you baby boomers. That's a band by the name of the Who. I love, I love them. And I enjoy their music. But in order to understand who SCAG is, you kind of have to understand, again, what we're dealing with and what we look like. So, this is our region. This is the region that Ojai is a part of. So, we're 191 cities, we're six counties, we're 18.5 million people, we're the 16th largest economy in the world. That's not nation, that's in the world. We're 38,000 square miles, and we're the nation's largest NPO. We are a very big deal in a lot of ways. What's not up here is that if you took that, those little blue counties, and you pulled them out, and you put them next to every state in our union, we would be the fifth largest state in America. So, we are, again, a very, very big region. How we're governed, it will give you more of a, the face of SCAG in a second, but how we're governed works in three different tiers. At the top level, we have what's called the General Assembly, which meets once a year down in the desert, and we have a representative from those 191 cities. Everybody has a voice, and everyone has a vote. And we vote for, our major plans are adopted, our bylaws are adopted, presidents, vice presidents, and so on are done, all at the General Assembly. And again, that's once a year. And that trickles down to the Regional Council, which happens monthly, and that's comprised of 86 local elected officials who represent districts, and they set policy direction on a monthly basis, and basically give staff direction. So, that, that's, that's who's making decisions on a monthly basis. On the third tier, we have what's called policy committees. We have three of them. Again, Mayor Lara is on the, on the policy committee, and that meets in conjunction with the Regional Council. And that's where policy recommendations are created. It's, I, what I think is probably the most important part of our governance structure, and I'm not just saying that because the mayor is on the policy committee, but it's truly where the work is done. That's where all the recommendations are created. That's where things, it's where being creative and solving problems actually happens. So, everything kind of trickles up if you're going up that slide. So, what does it look like locally? Here are your representatives. These are your folks every month that are representing you and your voice in downtown LA for Ventura County issues. So, these are your voices. So, up the top left is Carl Morehouse. He represents your district. So, if you have any issues that you want him to speak to at the Regional Council, I would suggest you tap his shoulder, shoulder? Shoulder? Down in Oxnard, Port Juaniemi, and Camarillo, that's represented by Carmen Ramirez, who's Mayor Pro Tem in Oxnard. Out in the East County is Glenn Becerra, who is a councilmember in Simi Valley. The supervisor who represents the county at the Regional Council is Linda Parks, and Keith Milhouse of Moore Park represents Ventura County Transportation Commission. So, those are the five voices at the Regional Council level. Again, at the committee level, we have, the first time Ventura is fully, has all of our seats full. This is the first time in, I think, our history in our relationship with SCAG. We have a, a seat at every single policy committee table. So, Mayor Lara is on a Transportation Committee. John Proctor, the mayor in Santa Paula, is on the Community Economic Human Development Committee, which is Affordable Housing, Economic Development, Community Development. David Pollak from Moore Park is on the Energy and Environment Committee. And if you have any issues related to any one of those themes, then I would say, please reach out. You can reach out to me, and I can connect you with each representative. But again, it's great that Mayor Lara is, is a part of it. So, that's, that's a bit, that's about all I'm gonna say about the who and the what. And I just wanted to share, before I close, of some of the things that are important right now, and what's happening at SCAG right this second. So, we're currently moving from our old regional transportation plan to a new regional transportation plan. We're updating it to 2016, in 2016, and this is kind of the, the flow, what it's gonna look like. We're expected to adopt at the next General Assembly in May, 2016. We did some workshops. The mayor was involved in Moore Park and Camarillo for some stakeholder comments. The draft RTPSCS will be out later this fall, October, and we'll also have presentations on the draft from staff in West County and East County, probably Ventura and Simi Valley, if you guys are interested, and any one of you are interested in hearing what the RTP is going to be about this year, where this region's going. It's actually fascinating stuff. And I did want to share a little bit about what's, what's moving our regional transportation plan and sustainable community strategy. This is, this is where, this is why I love being part of my agency, and this is what's fascinating. So, every, every time we update our regional transportation plan, we look at different trends that are moving the pen forward, backward, up, down, left, right. Here are the ma, the major trends that I find fascinating, and I think you will too. So, right now, baby boomers are no longer the majority generation. I know, be scared, some of you. The age of the millennials is upon us. We're seeing, it's a dramatic shift in thinking and everything. So, the baby boomers had the, had the seats of authority, had the decision-making power, and that trend is now slowly creeping into the millennials' hands. And so, we're seeing things like this. Rapid adoption of new technologies and, or rapid new communication technologies. I'm sure many of you can, can live without this a little bit, but millennials cannot. They would rather lose their car or their home, but as long as they still have their smartphone, they're connected, and that's the most important thing. They travel fewer miles and make fewer trips. They're less interested in car and homeownership. If you have teenagers or live around teenagers, you'll realize a recent trend is that they're delaying getting their driver's license. A cousin that just turned 25 got her license last year, because she didn't need it, didn't want it, didn't care. It wasn't a big deal. When I was 16, I was, I was doing, taking the test. Rapidly adopting to the shared economy. I'm sure you have heard this phrase thrown around a little bit, the shared economy, the sharing economy. I know that Ojai's dealing with, with this issue, actually. It's with Airbnb being a huge portion of the, of the shared economy from a housing and tourism point of view. But another part of it is Lyft, companies like Lyft and Uber, which are basically people renting out their cars and their services to take people as a taxicab. And that little picture, you can't really see it well, but bottom left is basically a home with price tags on everything, because everything is, is for rent, essentially. So, and that, everyone's an entrepreneur all of a sudden. And lastly, the favor, they favor low-travel urban lifestyles with emphasis on walking, cycling, and ride-sharing and transit. So, we've seen this, also, this trend also. Folks are moving from rural to more urban settings, and primarily because more amenities close by. That's primarily it. Convenience is driving this. So, these are huge, huge decision points and personality points for millennials that is driving this new economy, this, this new worldview, this new plan that we're engaged with. And if you want to see that, that cartoon on the top left says, "How was your day at school today, honey?" And she says, "You can check out my blog, Dad." Other transportation technologies are also driving the conversation. Here's just a few. Neighborhood electric vehicles, so you see golf carts everywhere. Urban mobility platforms, that's like Uber and Lyft. E-bikes, car sharing, travel planning apps, connected vehicle technologies. What I think is, is most fascinating is the, this idea of the fully autonomous vehicle Google's working on in the Bay Area. Computers are driving cars. I have no doubt, this is my, this is not SCAG's opinion, this is my opinion, but in the next five years, we will see fully autonomous vehicles driving around. In 10 years, we'll probably be taking them. We'll see. If that's true, maybe not. But it's, it's happening, and it's happening quick. So, these are some of the, the more interesting things that are happening in our nation, in our region, that are affecting land use, that are affecting transportation, and that are causing us to, to think differently. I thought you guys would be interested in them. We'll see where it goes. Anyways, that's just some, some food for thought. And with that, I know you have a big agenda. Thank you for your time. Thanks for letting me be here.
Well, thank you, Joseph Briglio. Do any of the councilmembers have any questions? No?
Then we can go through you if we have some.
Well, yeah. And I'm, I am just learning, I was disappointed not too long ago. It is very, it's a lot intense, and because we're such a big region, there's so many people involved, it could be intimidating. But as I've learned, and as I've asked questions, I've come to think that this is an organization that could benefit Ojai in, in some capacity, and it's important for us to be involved at that level to make some good policy planning. And, and that's why I, I was grateful Mr. Briglio invited me, and the fact that he's from here even made it more comforting, because we, we're, we're a small town compared to LA cities.
We're a small town that defines ourselves somewhat, somewhat outside the mainstream.
Absolutely.
Thanks for the contact information. I'm gonna be asking, I'm gonna be sending some questions your way.
Yeah, please do. Look forward to it. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. And for the public, anybody interested in this organization, they're, they're happy to hear from, from you too. Next presentation's Upper Ventura River Groundwater Management District Director Bruce Kober.
Kubler.
Kubler.
Yeah. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Bruce Kubler. I'm a director with the Ventura River Water District, and I'm here on behalf of our Groundwater Sustainability Agency Committee, which is formed to prepare a groundwater sustainability plan for the Upper Ventura River sub-basin. The context of my presentation tonight will be brief. It's basically to give you some background information to decide on the extent to which you want to participate in our agency. I can see two options. One, as a public agency with land management responsibility, you overlay a very small part of the basin, basically around the Vons area. But as a land management responsibility, you are a public agency and therefore are entitled to be part of the decision-making board. Another option would be to be part of an advisory committee. I imagine that we will have an advisory committee. We haven't discussed that specifically yet, but I imagine we will have to get a lot of public input in. So, that would be a second way to participate. So, let me give you a little background on our committee. We have five public agencies represented right now, three municipal water districts, or three water districts. Casitas Municipal Water District, the Ventura River Water District, the Miners Oaks Water District, we have the City of Ventura, and we have the County of Ventura. We have a total of 11 people participating in the committee, three each from the three water districts, two elected officials, and the general managers from each of those. And we have one representative from City of Ventura, and one representative from the County of Ventura. We've had about four or five meetings. We are next, at our next meeting, we plan to work with our attorneys that we've hired to prepare the actual structure of the organization. We think it's gonna be a joint powers authority. So, we're gonna begin with our attorneys to try to flesh out what that structure will look like, voting, things like that. In terms of our formation, we already have agreed among the five parties that we will be splitting the formation costs equally. We estimate the formation cost to be about $50,000. So, each of the five agencies will be paying about $10,000. If the city wanted to participate as a sixth, I suppose we would split the startup cost equally among six participants. The plan that has to be prepared will have to be done by 2022. We think it'll be done more quickly than that. The basin is in pretty good shape in terms of water level, stability, things like that. Major issue probably is the steelhead trout down in the live-reach by Foster Park. That is a very lower end of our basin. You're already a participant in the Ojai groundwater basin. The plan that they develop will have to address their contribution to that steelhead issue, because the San Antonio Creek drains the Ojai Valley groundwater basin. So, the two basins that come together there, and there'll have to be some coordination on issues like in-stream uses. The actual total cost of the plan and getting it going are anybody's guess. I'm guessing probably in the neighborhood of a couple hundred thousand dollars to maybe a million, depending on what kind of model we have to develop, if we have to develop a groundwater model. Right now, there's fairly good information on parts of the basin, but much of the basin is still unknown. We don't have records of all the wells, how much pumping takes place. So, to do a water balance, we're gonna have to hire some experts, geologists, probably hydrologists, and try to get some better metering and things like that. So, I think the cost could be anywhere from, like I said, a couple hundred thousand up to a million dollars. We probably anticipate, in the long term, we'll probably have some kind of a pumping fee, extraction fee, like they have for the Ojai Valley basin. Don't know how much that'll be. Like I said, we're just, just getting going and trying to structure voting rights and all the kind of things you have to do when you start up a joint powers authority. So, that's kind of my, my background. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the committee and where we're going, and... going and how you might want to participate. The committee has kind of assumed that you weren't interested. We've had some publicity. We've had one outreach meeting and we had 40 or 50 people show up. But our committee would like to have a very, a definite response from you. Are you interested to be on the decision-making board? Yes or no? If you want to participate some other way, that's fine, we can consider that, but we'd like to know so we don't assume something and are wrong about the assumption.
Great, thank you. I know we have a discussion item, this is discussion number six. I, I would right now refrain from any technical questions, but in terms of general questions, history, or about his, about Mr. Kubler's?
Yes.
Kubler, presentation, do you, do we, do any of the council members have any questions?
Some for later.
Yeah, I have some for later too, but I appreciate you making this initial presentation.
I was not planning on being here later on when it came up, so if, if there's some questions, I'd rather answer them now, but unless you want me to stick around, I mean...
It's, it's probably gonna be a late night.
That's what I was planning on going on.
Do, then I, would it be appropriate then just to ask some technical questions and then we'll deliberate when the item comes? Councilmember Haney?
Well, I, I just wanted to know how the, how the boundaries were set up between your future agency and the OB-GMA. Why would there be a percentage of Ojai in yours when I would think that that percentage would already be represented in the OB-GMA?
The bound, the boundaries are set by the Department of Water Resources in their bulletin 118. They have identified all the 500 and some groundwater basins in the state of California, and the boundaries are, were set by them. There is some opportunity for changing boundaries in the future after January of next year when they come up with guidelines how to do that. But right now, we have to stick with the boundaries that they have set in their groundwater bulletin.
And my idea is that a lot of that's just driven by geology. In other words, it's a defined aquifer east of the Y and, and, you know, another aquifer defined, defined west of the Y is my basic understanding.
It's a lot mostly geologically and hydrologically based, although I think the, the lower boundary of the basin by Foster Park was determined more by the location of the diversion dam that the City of Ventura built rather than by the geology so much, but it's close enough.
So, basically, the part of our city that would be part of, outside the OB-GMA jurisdiction is west of the Y. Hospital, high school, the residential behind Vons, Crotona, that kind of thing.
Yes. I think there's a map in your materials. Yeah, I think it'll show that.
So, it's not, it's, it's somewhat significant part of the community.
It's about 15%, right?
I don't know the number offhand.
I...
Who's managing this part of the, this basin now?
The basin is basically not managed. I mean, each of the groundwater agencies pumps the amount necessary to supply their users. And over the past, excuse me, over the past 65 years, the groundwater levels have been stable. I mean, you can see during a dry period like this, they go down, but the basin fills up very quickly within a month or two after a big storm, and then it goes down gradually over the next year and a half, two, three years. So, it's, it's a fairly shallow basin compared to Ojai Valley, so it fills up quickly and drains down more slowly.
But are the, are the two basins connected? I'm trying to figure out, why do we need two?
Well, the basins, OB-GMA went to their own, well, they're, they're geologically separate. There's not much, if you think about the boundary between, in the Ojai area by the Vons, there's not much hydraulic continuity between the basins there. It's almost like a, a groundwater divide. Down at the lower end where San Antonio Creek comes into the river, there is direct connection right down there. So, the basin, they're two basins because they were identified geog, geologically as two different basins.
So, currently, is the City of Ojai taking any water out of this, the, the newly?
No.
We're not?
In my knowledge, you don't have any wells within the Upper Ventura River groundwater basin. You just have, you overlay it so you have land management responsibility.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're not aware of any wells in the city limits west of the Y?
No.
A couple more quick questions. This new agency would have jurisdiction over, for example, deciding what metering requirements would be assessed on existing and new wells? Would that be the jurisdiction of this overall agency?
Yes, they have, they have very broad power. The agency would have very broad powers to do almost anything necessary to protect the long-term supply from the basin. Individual homeowner wells are exempt if they would be pumping two acre-feet per year or less for domestic use.
That was my question.
That's a de minimis, considered de minimis, so presumably...
But it's not a must. The legislation says may, not must.
Oh.
I read it.
Okay.
I had this discussion in Monterey.
Okay.
It's a commonly stated that it's a must, but it's a may. The sustainability agencies may require metering requirements on, on small wells.
Well, that's a good thing then. I like your interpretation.
Well, I'm just saying, I, I read the, I read the legislation and I checked it with the Department of Water Resources up there and they agreed.
Okay.
It's a commonly restated by people in the agencies that it's a must, but it's not. It's a may. You are allowed to require metering on every well.
Okay.
You know, if you want to.
And that would be a good thing because you have to have, you have to know what people are pumping if you're gonna do a water...
Exactly. In order to have a correctly calibrated model, you would prefer to have everything.
Exactly right.
You know? And then the other question, would this be the agency that would, for example, deal with the issue of recycling water from the sanitary district that currently can't be done because of City of Ventura and Fish and Wildlife regulations? And there's talk about doing a study about what exactly is needed for the conservation and steelhead ecology, you know, which would maybe free up for some recycling of the sanitary district water.
It's conceivable that could be included as part of the overall plan.
That would be part of this agency as well.
It could be, yes. I don't know, we have to work that out, obviously.
But that's the kind of thing that this, this new agency would be involved with.
Could be.
Thank you.
Could you state again how many meetings you, there's been between these five agencies?
I'm guessing five or six.
Five or six. Do you know how, how far along you are in, in terms of planning how this agency will implement their, their policies? Are you guys marrying any other groundwater management agency? Or are you guys basically starting from scratch?
We're, we're gonna use a, a kind of a standard sort of JPA legal setup, and we're gonna start talking about that at our next meeting. So, we are just now beginning, we've had to get approval from the various parties to hire an attorney. We've finally done that. The attorney's gonna be, he's been at one of our meetings. He'll be at the next meeting, and we'll be going through, actually talking about how, what kind of voting are we gonna have? How are you, are you gonna have waiting voting? What are the bylaws gonna be like? We're just starting to get into that nitty-gritty stuff for actually forming the organizational structure for the agency. All the rest of it's been kind of talking about public outreach and doing little background material things.
In, in your report, you state that the water purveyors are able to basically charge these fees to the users. So, the City of Ventura, are they just gonna put the money forward? Or are they gonna, some, some way, are they gonna charge their residents for, for being part of this agency or?
We haven't even considered that yet. That's way down the, way down the road. We're hoping to get the actual structured agency formed by early next year.
So, until you get it structured, then you'll start planning and seeing how much...
Then we'll start preparing it. We've gotta do some background information to try to collect more hydrologic data, putting in more metering points along the Ventura River to start collecting data. But in terms of actually developing the plan, that'll probably happen after we have the agency formed, and that'll be maybe early next year.
Okay. So, the startup money, it's just to begin the process of research?
Yes.
And it could go up with time?
And presumably, the way that we've cost share could change also. We're just talking right now about the initial startup, but once you actually get the agency going, then it depends on, you know, it's like the City of Ojai, if you join us, you don't pump anything. So, does that mean if we had a, if it was raised, all the money was raised by a pump fee, you wouldn't be paying anything? That's not fair. So, how do you figure out an equitable way to have each of the different parties, like the county, pay? So, that all has to be worked out. We're just very early stages of that.
Okay. Yeah, because most of the jurisdiction is in the county area, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions? No? Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm gonna move along, move on to public communications. Is a time set aside during the meeting for members of the public to address the city council successor agency board on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items? Matter raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the council board and will be generally, will generally be referred to staff and/or take place on the subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than the emergency item, no action can be taken. Persons wishing to address the council board are requested to fill out a speaker's card prior to council board reaching this point of the agenda. Comments must be limited to three minutes, three minutes or less.
I'm gonna start public comment.
Good evening, Mayor Laura and council members. As I'm sure you're aware, the CDFA was spraying in Ojai this last week and in the backyard citrus. And I have spoken with the CDFA representatives, and the people do have a right to opt out of the spraying on their property. Ojai residents have expressed concerns over the toxicity of the spraying and also the lack of proper notification. I spoke with the CDFA rep and was told that once a facility is found in an area, the CDFA schedules an open house for all the residents in that particular spray zone, and they notify the, the residents after the meeting with pink notices, giving residents at least 48 hours notice prior to the spraying. According to the CDFA representative that I spoke with, there have been six spray areas in the Ojai area, including Miners Oaks, Oakview, and Ojai since October 2014. Citrus trees, orange jasmine, and cory bushes are treated. And of course, the, the commercial citrus growers handle taking care of their own groves, and they have the option of doing it organically. I personally would like to ask the city council to ban the use of neonicotinoids, but since that's probably not possible, we transitioned to organics, would like to see regular testing being done for pyrethroids and neonicotinoids in the Ojai area so we can monitor our exposure here to these compounds in our air and soil and waterways. Similar to what Santa Barbara has already done, could the City of Ojai set aside funds for pyrethroid and imidacloprid testing? It would seem to be particularly important in our little valley where we're surrounded by the mountains and the air quality is affected by everything that we do. And Ojai is a place where tourists come not knowing that perhaps they are being exposed to toxic chemicals. So, I think we have to be very mindful of what we allow in our, in our neighborhoods and in the groves. In Europe, they have actually banned neonicotinoids. The Santa Barbara Restoration and Water Quality Improvement is funded by hotel taxes, and they've taken that money and have done five lab tests, testings, and have found imidacloprid every time. So, we would really ask the city council to consider looking at testing for these chemicals. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I do see that I have a lot of public comment cards regarding this issue. Could we just, Rob, do you know if the state's required to notify the city when they're gonna spray for the citrus seed? Mr. Clark?
I, I don't know for sure. I think Mr. Grant has talked to them and they've indicated that they did, although we're not aware of exactly how they did that. So, the answer is I don't know.
Can we follow up with that?
Yeah, we will.
Councilmember Wyrick?
And Patty, you sat down before I could ask this question. When it says $400 per sample, five times, I assume there's a lot of samples in each of those five times?
Could come up to the mic?
I'm trying to get an idea of the scope of, of, of cost and testing that you're suggesting.
Okay. They're testing for four different types of neonicotinoids.
So, four samples each of the five times?
Five times.
Okay. Thank you. That's, I just wanted to fully understand. Thank you. And then on the question of notification, do they consider notification just a notification to homeowners rather than through the city itself?
I, I think not. I think they actually are supposed to somehow notify the city, but we have not identified whether we were notified or if so, how.
Well, if you don't know, I would say that's a, that's an issue. Yeah.
Joni, do we have further questions? No? Joni Blackster?
Good evening, council members. My name is Joni Blackster, and I am a member of the Board of the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, as well as being the local chapter leader for a nutrition education nonprofit called the Weston Price Foundation. So, as a health coach, I study the effects of pesticides on the human body. And so, that is why this issue brings me here tonight. And I do want to say that I, I feel like this is a somewhat controversial issue because it could be framed in terms of a public health issue versus the health, the financial health of our citrus growers and, in, in our valley. And the reality is, is that all of us here want to see our citrus grows thrive as well as our public health also be safe. So, in talking about this with Patty, what we really want to strongly put forth is that the only way to take the controversy out of this conversation is to institute regular testing, because what that does is it moves the conversation from guesswork into actual data. And I do want to say that my personal really strong concern has to do with the fact that I believe that these pesticides fall down into the ground and the, the dirt, the earth becomes laden with them. Part of the way is, reason is because of the way these pesticides are applied. The pyrethroids are aerially applied to the trees themselves. The neonicotinoid imidacloprid, which has a terrible reputation worldwide for causing colony bee collapse, and as Patty mentioned, has been banned in the European Union since 2013. The state's description is that the neonicotinoid imidacloprid must drench the ground underneath the trees. So, my concern is, is that that soil will be, is, because we've already had five applications in the valley, will be loaded with these pesticides. It's summertime, it gets dry, the dust travels up into the air, and that dust, at that point, can potentially travel anywhere in the valley. And as Patty was mentioning, we do have the mountains on all three sides, so what is released in the valley tends to stay in the valley and perhaps move around so that it's not just a matter of, oh, you need to be concerned about not being downwind or downstream during an application in a grove or when the CDFA is in the community. At that point, it's virtually anyone in the community, including the unborn, our immune-compromised, our elderly, our children, our babies are in, potentially inhaling this dust. And I do also want to just quickly add that the testing that they've already done in Santa Barbara really confirms that concern, because I just spoke to Jill Murray yesterday, and she said that they have consistently found imidacloprid in runoff from areas where it should not have been found, that is to say, coming off of pavements, parking lots, things like that. So, that does indicate that it's flying through the area and landing in, in places where far from origin. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
I have one question. What do they do about it then?
They're only testing. And my perspective as a health coach is, is that this, these applications are state-mandated. We can't do anything about that. We have very little wiggle room. But what we can do is test, because if we consistently find higher levels than should be there, and if there's a lot of controversy around whether or not imidacloprid actually degrades within the period of time that if you go to the IPM, the UC IPM website, it says it's gone in three to four months. I've talked to a number of experts who say, oh, that's not showing up as accurate in testing. And so, Santa Barbara is already showing that. So, all we can do is test so we can present a case to the state if we feel that it's, it's hurting the residents' health.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Joni. Deborah Mo?
Hello, council.
Hello, council. I think that the city dropped the ball on letting people know that they were going to spray. Several people walked the neighborhood on this last spraying. Everybody did not get a notice. On Ventura Street, Blanche Street, they sprayed from Kenyatta over to Signal, kind of that square. It was like every fourth house got it on Thursday, the third, the second. They got it on Thursday, they had a public meeting Thursday evening. No planning, no people that work, they can't make it. Friday was a holiday. So they didn't have time to opt out. I think it's criminal. I think that you guys need to step up. We're your constituents. I mean, hey, we depend on you to help us. So enough said on that. I also want to address, I keep hearing it's going to be an El Nino year, an El Nino year. And I just read something about San Luis, Santa Maria and Santa Barbara are all working on rainwater catching, catching the rainwater. I mean, is there anything that we have that are, or thinking about putting in place? This might just be a one, a one-year blast. We don't know if Casitas is going to get filled up again. I think we need to have something in place that, not just runoff. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Pete LaFol.
Thank you, council members. Pete LaFol, 999 East Ojai Avenue. On the crosswalk update in front of Whispering Oaks, we're still waiting for that crosswalk project in conjunction with Caltrans. They're bureaucratically deficient following through with it. The crosswalk would accomplish, obviously, traffic calming, the public access to pharmacy and to the store for the seniors and residents at Whispering Oaks. So if you could use your collective pull to see what's going on with Caltrans and see if they could come out of retirement and follow through with that project.
Thank you. Council member Wyrick?
Yeah, I want to amplify. I had lunch the other day sitting at that Thai restaurant and it scared me to death, some of the things I saw going on, people trying to cross there. It's bad. And I think it'd be appropriate to find out the status of the project, absolutely.
Council member Clapp?
Well, I was just going to ask, Mr. Clark, is Greg Grant is here and able to give us an update on that at all? Or are you?
I think, yeah, he is here. I don't, I don't know the specifics.
I don't know the specifics, but he may be in the back room listening to us.
Great.
See if he's here. If not, then we'll give him a chance if he's here to gather stuff. But thank you, Pete. Julie Tumamayet?
Julie Tumamayet-Stansley, 365 North Poli Avenue, tribal chair of the Barbarania Ventodania Band, Mission Indians. I want to thank you, council and the community here for being present and being involved in our community here and working through issues and concerns. I'd like to thank city council and legal staff for this opportunity that we've had recently to work together to create the ordinances that will help protect cultural resources. I do still have some concerns as far as staff is concerned and those kind of have them numbered here. And one is about proper notification on projects that are, that are coming up. We've received a couple and there's been more projects that have been on the table here. We have put in a request back in February about six projects that are of concern and one of them is going to be coming soon and one of them in a meeting fairly shortly. And there's been really no consultation on that. So we would like to be able to, you know, voice our concerns. And as we stated earlier, that the confidentiality is an issue, so that's why consultation is very important to be done, you know, with landowner or project owners and those involved. We were, as we gathered together here with, with staff, we talked about many ways of how to come about doing this ordinance. Let me see. It's been advised by the city council several months ago to consult with the local tribes, but you know, that was way, that was back in January and that was prior to the AB 52 coming onboard. So city had recommended, city council recommended staff to be able to consult with us prior to this coming into effect. So we're again, still hoping that that's going to happen. It's already past that deadline of July 1st. So we've been at this a long time to get consultation. Let me see, what else was there? You know, I just mostly came up here, you know, to just thank you for this opportunity and to just really be happy that we're starting now. We're starting with this written documents that are going to be coming into effect and we can start moving forward with the protection of our culture. So thank you, thank you.
Mayor Laura?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that, to Julie in particular, that we are available at any time to sit down and talk either generally about issues or about specific items that you have on your list and we'd be very glad to do that. And I'd personally be glad to be involved.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, you're welcome. If I could just mention quickly too, that, you know, a lot of people just see my brother and I here. And I just wanted to state that there is a large community of native peoples, although it is just directly our family that live here in the valley, in which many people know, they were restaurant owners, waitresses and teachers in the school, the work I do locally in the schools and my brother are here. But we do represent a very large community, most of them living in the Ventura County area and even some that live outside the area that have expressed great desire to move back, move back into their tribal territory and to be able to have a closer voice. So in the meantime, we are representing a very large community of native peoples here with the Barbarania Ventodania Band. So I thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Julie. Deborah Pendry?
Thank you, Mayor Laura. Council members, Deborah Pendry, 309 Riverside Road, representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. And you might have been thinking that the last council meeting was the last you would hear about our Solarize program, or maybe even hoping, but we've extended it. It was due to end on July 18th. We've now, through Rotary Club support and city support, been able to extend it to August 15th and we've added another workshop. So what's really exciting for us is that we had a goal of adding 50 KW of solar power to the valley through this program and we're at 40-plus already. So extending it another month and having another workshop, I think we can hit 75 kilowatts and that's a lot to add to our community and we're real excited about that. Even though it doesn't affect us directly, solar has a much smaller water footprint as an energy source for us. So we can also think about that when we think about going solar. And so the workshop that we've added is this Thursday, which is July 16th, and it'll be back at the Oakview Park and Resource Center, which is in Oakview. And you can get the full details at our website, ojaivalleygreencoalition.org. And just to emphasize, if you've even remotely been thinking about going solar, to come to the workshop. Even though it's not the optimal choice, because it's best to own your system and, you know, you can see a very impressive return on your investment, depending on your situation, you can actually have solar where you're basically leasing out your roof. There's no money down, there's no cost whatsoever. That's kind of like the last choice, but even as the last choice, you save money. No matter what you do with solar, you save money and you get a return on investment. And Pat McPherson is here to back me up if you don't believe me, because he did at the Rotary Club. Thank you. So anyways, Solarize program's going now to August 15th and we encourage everyone to come to our workshop this Thursday. Thank you.
Great. You can get more information on the Green Coalition website too, correct?
That's right.
Okay. Vicki Cohen?
I live at 922 East Ojai Avenue. Greetings. I was one of the people, along with Patty and Joni, that walked Friday before the spraying to canvass the houses, to put next to the notices, our notice that they had the option to opt out. And what I observed was that three-quarters of the people were not at home. They were working, working class neighborhood, everybody was gone. Some of the houses were just notified the very day that we were notifying that they could opt out. So we slapped our message next to the just newly applied notification from the CDFAs. So I guess what I'm kind of concerned about is that the lack of, the lack of notification, the lack of people knowing that they had the right to opt out if they wanted to. Also, I wanted to make a note that there have been no bacterial Asian citrus bugs found in California, or at least Southern California that I know of. There's no, there's no, there's not a bug that's been analyzed that has come up with this greening disease. So this is a prophylactic treatment of our citrus and a few other plants. We're treating for something that doesn't really exist yet, you know? As Mo said, it's like putting your cast on your leg before you break it, you know? Also, I wanted to know, I guess it's a rhetorical question, but I wanted to know what determines the area that they spray, just by finding the insect itself or what is the determinant? Does anybody know or?
No. I don't know, but I'm sure we could find out for you what triggers everything and I'm not sure if Joni or Patty.
Yes, when they find the seed, then they, do you know any area that then gets sprayed?
When they found this, when they find the seed, they denote the area. That's what she stated.
So are we, should we prepare to have our more spraying done in our communities every time they find this insect to?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, council member Clapp?
I think that we need to contact these people that are doing the spraying, have them come and explain to the community what it is, how it's going to be done. We haven't, I didn't know about this. So clearly, there's, was no, it doesn't sound like there's a protocol in place for them to come to the city to even start this process happening or is there?
I think as Patty explained, they actually did have a public meeting on July 2nd, but it wasn't adequately publicized and so.
Well, they got the notice that day.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So.
That's what I mean by, we don't have a protocol that's, that's strict enough to, you know, to make sure that that kind of thing doesn't occur either. I think we need to maybe address how this is to be done in the future to make sure that people are adequately.
Maybe we could plan that for the next meeting.
Because it seems to me that there's going to be more of it.
Yeah, yeah.
I would assume.
My protocol and there is a letter that goes out to the state, from the state approximately a week before. My concern about the way the state notifies.
If you could come up to the mic and explain that, she's explaining the protocol that there's supposed to follow, meaning the CDFAs?
So as I understand it, the first notification comes by mail and is supposed to be about a week before the spraying happens.
Real quickly, just to the people that it's going to be sprayed at?
So what happens is it is confirmed that the seed, the Asian citrus seed is found. Once they confirm that, they designate an area that is then targeted for spraying.
And those are the people notified?
Yes, by mail was the first notification.
People that are next door where there would be drift aren't notified?
No. Yes, they are notified. Everyone within the perimeter that the state defines, and I don't remember the specs.
But outside that perimeter on a windy day, nobody else has been notified?
Correct, correct. So first, there is the mail notification, then Patty, correct me if I'm getting this wrong, then I believe they go around for, and put notices on the doors. For this most recent round, we saw people putting the pink notices on the doors on Friday when we were putting our notices up. So I think what happened was they did some of the notifications on Thursday and some on Friday. My concern about the pink slip that I saw for myself was there was nothing in it about how you are able to opt out, nothing. I don't know what was in the letter that was mailed because I haven't seen that, but I would suspect it was similar. There was a line at the bottom that said, if you have questions, call this 800 number.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, council member Clapp?
Would my fellow council members agree that we need to set up some sort of policy for this?
Definitely, we need a presentation.
I don't think we can set the policy. I think we can ask them.
We can ask them for the presentation and we can ask to be involved.
And presumably, if somebody opts out, then they're going to end up with all the bugs.
Well, but we can be involved in the present, we can be involved in the notification protocols.
Mr. Mayor?
I think that's important.
Mr. Summers?
Thank you. As so much of this is driven by the state and they have quite broad power in this realm, I'm not sure that the city has the power to force a notification regime on the state, but we can certainly demand and indicate to them that it's in their best interest to show up, put a workshop on for the community and to, we'll confirm.
Yes.
Exactly what they're supposed to do and whether or not they've done it. But I'm not sure we can force them to do more than they already.
I don't think anyone's suggesting that, but I think we can have a presentation, we can have a Q and A, we can see if we can amplify and deepen the notification and opt-out information through our communication services that the city provides to its citizens. I would think we could, we could do that.
Definitely, definitely.
Mayor?
Yeah, council member Haney?
I just wanted to add to it if you're, first of all, you're identifying a pest and then what they're going to do is set up a control area to apply pesticides to control that pest. And then within that control area, they're giving you the opportunity to opt out of an application. The concern I have is if you're opting out, are they giving you any other information that's going to help you to control this pest in another manner other than a pesticide? So I think that's something that we should be asking for too.
Yeah, great. And we will. I know this is a public comment, so I don't want to get too much into discussing this because it hasn't been agendasized, but.
That's the issue that I wanted to bring up. Can we agenda size this for next, the next meeting?
And I think we'll, we'll figure out the process and then we'll go from there, but thank you. David Borgan?
I'm David Borgan and I live at the Whispering Oaks Community. I didn't know anything about this until I saw that story in the Wednesday issue of the Ojai Valley News. Nobody in my community was notified that any of this was going on anywhere in town. People don't stay in one little part of town. We move about. And I, for one, every morning walk my dog all over town and I don't know if things are going to be poisoned in an area I walk into or not. That's my concern is also that I have a serious lung condition and I haven't noticed in the last four days, my breathing has deteriorated seriously to the point where I have trouble breathing just standing in one spot. It used to be tiring to walk across a room, but just standing in one spot has now become a little difficult to do. And I think it may have something to do with the drift of this stuff. And also in my backyard, I have bird feeders and bird baths and suddenly I have very few birds visiting for feeding and bathing and whatever. I would have like 50 to 60 birds during the day fighting over the food and the bird baths and so forth. It's down to like two or three birds at a time now. So something has happened and I think it is related to this spray. And I expect you, as our representatives, to do something about this. For what they, we're not, we're not being told what to do. If I hadn't, if I'd known about this, I would have maybe gone to. If I hadn't, if I'd known about this, I would have maybe gone to Ventura. Or, but then that wouldn't have saved me either. I'd come back home and the stuff would still be flying around. There seemed to be no way to escape this. Thank you.
Thank you. Delaney Labari?
Good evening, Council. Here. I'm 206 South Blanch. I'm representing the Green Coalition. And as some of you may know, I've been active in the agricultural community in Ventura County for the last 15 years, making films about agriculture. I've sat on a lot of committees, have worked with a lot of the farmers. And I certainly understand the concern about the Asian citrus psyllid and the disease and wanting to make sure that Ojai maintains its good groves. That said, I also know, and some of you may remember the days when Roundup first came out, and they said, "It's so safe, you can drink it." And we clearly know that's not the case. There were a few salesmen who did believe it and passed away. And I don't say that in jest. I mean, because it's a convincing argument that the chemical companies always give you. And they really sincerely tell you that, you know, it has a shelf life and it'll be okay, and it's heavily regulated, and the way they, you know, we've got pesticide officers who are on the site, watching everything, taking their notes. But then, oh, oops, you know, it's hanging around like in Santa Barbara a year later. It's not gone in three months or four months. So I would reiterate that, no, we can't tell the state that we don't want it, because they're the state and they're going to do it anyway. But I think that the recommendation that we start to test is critical. Because if we do not have a baseline and we do not collect, you know, do the data along the way, we can't say later, gee, we've got cancer clusters we can't document and we're not quite sure why, but we think it's because of the spraying you've been doing. And they say, well, you know, really, it could be anything. So I think it's critical that we start creating the data and knowing where we are. And the issue about dust is huge, because in Kauai, I've just come back from the islands where I'm doing another film about agriculture, and the drift is creating huge cancer clusters there. So because we have so many old people, you know, seniors, of which I'm rapidly becoming, and so many young kids in this community, these are the populations that are hit the hardest and are the most susceptible to these kind of changes. So let's see what we can do to at least start creating a database on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Delaney.
I don't have any more speakers cards. Anybody in the public wishing to speak? If not, then I'm going to move on to Commissioner's report. Commissioner's report is a time set aside during the first meeting of each month for the Chair Representative of any of the four City Commissions and Building Appeals Board to make a brief verbal report on activities to the City Council and community. These reports are intended to be informational. No action will be discussed or taken. Do I have, yes. Commissioner?
Good evening. Commissioner Jack Yellow.
Jack, I can't, I apologize.
Just call me Chester.
Yes.
This will be brief. We had a joint meeting with the H P C on Thursday to discuss the rock wall rebuild for the Libby House. The Planning Commission approved the variance in the D R P with the condition of creating a mock sample of a dry stack recumbent wall to be used as a prototype and to be approved by the H P C. The H P C moved to continue the item and requested that the property owner provide elevation drawings of the entire length of the wall along Foothill Road, frontage, for their consideration. So we'll see how that goes. Another point, we successfully finished the second dwelling compliance program, which you'll be revisiting on a few items on that tonight. But while this is fresh in all of our minds, we believe it would be a good time to revisit the second dwelling ordinance itself for much-needed improvements and modifications. That's it. Thank you.
Any questions for our Planning Commissioner? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chester. Anybody from the Arts Commission? I see Commissioner Golden, but I don't see the Chair Addison. Any report? No? If not, then, oh.
She's up.
Oh.
No, I just want to say that I do miss coming up and giving those reports, but Chair Addison is not here tonight. Have you been told about the exhibit that's up this time?
No.
All right, so this is a newer exhibit that's up. I'll just talk about that for a minute. It's work by those students who were given scholarships by Ojai Studio Artists. And for the public to know, there is a gallery, which is not on camera, but there's a gallery here at City Hall that holds several, I believe there were 15 or 17 students who were selected to receive scholarships, and some of their work is on display here. In addition to that, some of our most recent acquisitions is on display right now. There's a wonderful 19, circa 1950s photograph of Ojai in the exhibition hall, next to the offices. And other than that, I'm not prepared to give, to give the report, but I thought you might like to hear about that. So thank you for asking, Savaro Merrillier.
Thank you. And, yes, Councilmember Clapp?
I was just going to point out that Greg Grant, who we believe has a moment to talk about Whispering Oaks Crosswalk.
Do you, Mr. Grant, do you have an update about the crosswalk at Whispering Oaks?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Yeah, the update is we've been in process permitting that. So it's the standard cycle with Caltrans, I guess. It was, I think Pete had recognized that. It takes about three months for them to review our submittal, and then they gave us four weeks to resubmit. And so we just went through another cycle of that. They returned it with probably more comments than they had the last time. So we're getting through it. We'll have, we have to have it submitted again in about two more weeks. And then it'll go through another round. And just as far as a separate issue is the funding, and we do have, you know, we received other separate funding for the construction. So when these are done, we're trying to get through the basic conforming conditions, just that we can get the permit and be secure with it. Once we get it, we want to go ahead and do a little more custom design. So I wouldn't say it's, you know, imminent, the whole construction.
Do you know the time, timeline, timeframe?
I think we're still, hopefully, four months out before we get a permit. I think I said that four months ago. And then I think it's another round or two of Caltrans. And then once we receive that, we're going to ask for some design exceptions, once we're fully confirmed with a basic design conformance of what their standard design is. So that'll take another, I hate to say it, probably another four to six months after that. So I think all in all, we're probably dealing with, honestly, to be, set some reasonable expectations. Four months to get no design exceptions, and then another six months to get the design exceptions approved. So probably 10 months before we get a permit that we want to have, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Grant? No? Thank you for that.
Sorry, wasn't looking for it.
I'm going to turn back. Any other Commissioners or Building Appeals Board? I see some Building Appeals Board members, but. No? Dale?
I think I'm the only member here. We didn't meet in the last month, so I don't really have any, we will be meeting, I think, a week from tonight. I've not seen the agenda. I'm going to hand in my card.
Thank you. With that, I don't see anybody else, any other Commissioner here. So I'm going to move to our consent calendar. Does anybody wish to pull any items, or do I hear a motion?
I motion that we approve the consent.
Second.
Calendar.
Roll call?
Wirick?
Aye.
Clapp?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes.
Flats?
Yes.
Haney?
Here.
Yes. A key.
Our second item, Public Hearing, text amendment of the Ojai Municipal Code Amending Section 10-2.1709, changing the eligibility date for the second unit compliance program. And I'll turn it over to staff for a report.
Yeah, I have an extensive report. The, the current code has an eligibility date of buildings built before January 1st of 2006. And when you reviewed the guidelines, you changed that to June 23rd, 2015, which was the date that you did the review. And this ordinance simply amends the code to affect that change.
Any questions for staff? I do have a question, just a quick one. When does 180 days start from that date, or from when the program is implemented?
Well, they're both the same. We have already implemented the program, even though this technicality isn't completed yet. So, so if someone has a unit that was built after 2006 and before 2015, we'll still start working with them.
Okay, did they only have 180 days?
180 days from June 23rd.
From June 23rd.
That's 180 days to get the application.
Yes, just the application. That's, not the process.
Correct.
Okay, so we're, are we doing anything to market it, putting anything in the?
We haven't yet, but we should.
Yeah, so, okay. That, because 180 days started, so again, that's my question. I think there's some urgency. If there's no questions for staff, I'm going to open up the public hearing. I don't have any speakers card regarding this item. Anybody from the public wishing to speak? No, I will close the public hearing. I'll turn it back to council. If there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll move to approve the recommendation.
Second.
Could I have a roll call, or do I ask, Sherry, do you read the title of the ordinance first, or?
We can just do roll call.
Roll call?
Wirick?
Aye.
Clapp?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes.
Flats?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Item number three, Request to Consider Development to Affordable Housing. I'll turn it over to staff for a quick report. Then I will turn it over to the Affordable Housing Committee for their report.
So, thank you, Mayor Lara. This was put on the agenda at your request to provide the Affordable Housing Committee with an opportunity to make a presentation. In preparing the staff report, I received questions about a number of topics from a number of different people. And I've tried my best to, to give an objective response to those questions. I'm not sure there's a need to go through all of them at this point in time. If you want me to, I will, or I could just respond to questions either now or after the Affordable Housing Group makes their presentation.
Okay, well, or else, I'm going to do this, I'm going to ask, does any of the council have any questions in regards to the administrative report of Mr. Clark? Or do we want to wait to hear the affordable housing?
I'd like to hear the presentation.
Okay, so with that, then I'll turn it over to Mr. Miley and Ms. Murphy for their report.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. And my family has lived in the city of Ojai since 1968. I'm the Chairperson of the Ojai Affordable Housing Committee. And Judy Murphy, who shares this presentation, has lived in the city for 11 years. Over the past three years, we've had participation and input from other committee members, Dale Hansen, Bob Daddy, William Wirick, Helen Conley, and Wendy Hilkers. Our committee was created following discussions about the increasing burden of the lack of housing, both for sale and for rent, available at reasonable prices. Our goal is to provide affordable housing, especially workforce housing, to help lower-income families climb into the middle class. The program we will describe provides supportive after-school education, family financial education, and as needed, social family problem solving. I'm going to ask Judy to come up, but I would like to say, first of all, the council has received some information from us in the form of two handouts. These handouts are available for the public. They were on the table. And I will go get some and hand them out, maybe as Judy speaks, if some of the people need them. So Judy?
Good evening. We are here tonight to ask council to consider two policies, which we feel will move our city in a positive direction, allowing some of our workforce families to upgrade their living conditions. The policy, policy actions that we request are to A, confirm the council's intention to proceed with the building of 100% affordable rental units on Parcell 10 and/or 11. For the record, we are still interested in using Parcel 10, that area behind the City Hall, which is eight acres and we think a very suitable parcel. B, although the agenda does not reflect this second request, we did make it in a meeting with the mayor and Mr. Clark, and it is discussed in a July 10 memo to the council. We are asking the council to respond to the formal written request, which was submitted by People Self-Help Housing Corporation, to provide a concept proposal for Parcel or Site 10 and 11 to be presented to the council in approximately six to eight weeks.
The term affordable housing carries the criteria which sets economic brackets determining household and family incomes establishing eligibility. Families who fall within these income brackets and who pay more than 30% of their income for housing can be eligible for affordable housing. All of what we present is found in our city's general plan, specifically the state-approved housing element 5, which we will operate under until 2021. The needs of reasonably priced housing go well beyond our city and our valley to all of California. The California State Legislature over many years has repeatedly addressed this urgent need and has documented the number of families, income levels, percentage of families, households paying 30 to 50% plus of their total income for housing, and has crafted legislation enabling cities and counties to act within their own jurisdictions. City councils and boards of supervisors are able to set policy, support developments, to begin to help these families normalize the burden of excessive income expenditure for a living space, and also in a more basic way, create more inventory of units. We know that many housing units are overcrowded, violating basic health and safety codes. By supporting proper and additional affordable housing, crowded and unhealthy living situations can be reduced. Now, the city's general plan, the approved housing element establishes all the data needed to describe the problem that we have faced, and we have faced now, and we've faced for some time. So we're not going, we don't plan to describe that tonight. It's in the handout. I took, we took special, specific charts out of the housing element and reproduced them on those pages. I just said, I handed them out, okay. However, there are two issues which we want to clarify. One is the application procedure, which a jurisdiction like our city can use to determine eligibility or preferences for a rental apartment. And two, our limited water supply. The procedure to be used in establishing which families become eligible for consideration has been refined since the city-held workshop that we held on September 30th. The cities of Ventura and Oxnard use a priority system, giving preference to those families who have members working in the city and living in the city. And then they also are able to give priority to those having members working in the city but living elsewhere. A somewhat similar application priority, preference system or approach was also suggested in our housing element, both 4 and 5, which we found. The second issue is domestic water available for an affordable housing development. With the current drought weighing heavily on all of California and our own valley, concern has been expressed about the availability for such a new development. Your council has also had a. Your council has also had a question about new water being supplied for new development. However, the state legislature considers that their overarching duty is to guide California in reducing the growing problem of unavailable and out-of-range housing prices for thousands of families living on modest incomes. Thus, they enacted legislative bills which give priority to affordable housing developments for water. However, it does allow a local water entity to deny water for an affordable housing unit development, only if a regional water emergency was declared. And at that point, no new water for anyone in any part of the water service area is provided. Importantly, new housing units being built today of modest design use significantly less water than similar housing built just a few years ago. And they certainly use less water than landscaped, single-family homes. So, if the drought worsens and an emergency is declared, the project will be put on hold until it rains again. But as long as water-will-serv notices are provided by the water purveyors, affordable housing has priority according to state law. Okay. Our original, our committee originally became aware of People Self-Help Housing through former couns, former councilperson Carol Smith. About four years ago, Councilmember Smith spoke about the contributions of this corporation and invited Ken Truggero, who was corporation vice president, and John Fowler, president, who is here, to visit Ojai, and they toured several of the city parcels, considering the possibility of a project. In People's current letter, written by John Fowler, he presented the state legislature's guidance on how a city can respond to a request for the notice when it notifies, when the city decides to make land available for affordable housing. Their letter shows strong interest in presenting a concept proposal for site eleven, should your council determine its suitability. Their overall mission is to help families beyond the lower, go beyond lower-income economic status by providing their comprehensive services, which they've been doing for forty-five years. And they have over forty developments that they own and manage right now. Through their nonprofit Duncan Group, the affordable housing developments which they build and they own and manage remain affordable, not for forty years, not for sixty years. And by the way, Montgomery Oaks, I believe, is gonna go, is gonna convert to market in two thousand and thirty-three, if I remember correctly. It was in the report, the housing element. Their mission is to keep their affordable developments affordable in perpetuity. I had to learn how to spell that, but I think that means beyond my life, or something like that, all right. And last, for Judy.
Okay, so we hope that the council will find it possible this evening to follow through on the two requests that we are making to you tonight, to affirm your intention to designate this property as something you want to use for affordable housing. We also want you to ask People Self-Help to do the presentations that they have offered, the concept presentations that they have offered to do. So, without further ado, it is my privilege to introduce, reintroduce, I should say, to you tonight, Morgan Benevito, who is the director of multi-family housing development for Peoples, and John Fowler, who is the president of People Self-Help Housing Corporations and its parent organization, the Duncan Group. Thank you very much for all the time that you have given to us on this subject, and I am now going to turn the microphone over to Mr. Fowler.
Good evening, Mayor Laura and councilmember, and, can you hear me? I can hear myself, okay. Great, my name is John Fowler, as she said, president and CEO of People Self-Help Housing, and this is my second time in front of you, is, as Bill was mentioning, and we've been, you know, walking with you on this journey of when you were getting your housing element done, and, and we did, originally did a, a presentation for you and a concept to decide, could we get to twenty units without going to three stories, and could we get the state to buy into your housing elements? So, your, your journey has been our journey for a little while, but I wanted to give you a little bit of information about People Self-Help Housing, just to refresh you about that. It's really short, I think, and if Jeremy can bring it up? It's coming? Jeremy, I'm hanging here, okay. All right, so, our People Self-Help Housing, and our mission here is to provide affordable housing, as Bill was mentioning, and Judy, programs leading to self-sufficiency by for low-income families, seniors, and other special needs on the central coast. So, that's our mission, and we're nonprofit, as you know. So we've been around for forty-five years, so that's been our experience, speaks for itself, I think, if you've visited our sites. We, celebrating our forty-fifth year, we have forty-five sites. We didn't exactly plan it exactly that way, but it's worked out really nicely, and that's gonna be a great little marketing thing for us. We have about a hundred and sixty employees, about a hundred of those work in our property management, who manage our sites to make sure that they stay, you know, maintain, that the residents stay housed, and what have you. Many national awards we've gotten over the forty-five years. It's rental and ownership, which means we do, or we're talking tonight about multifamily, but we also do sweat equity. It's a similar program to Habitat, but we were, we started it before them. They actually had our logo for a while, so, so we've been around for quite a while. And we do new and rehabilitation of projects. A lot of cities call us in when their projects aren't working very well, and we take over management of them. And then, of course, we provide very, a lot of social services on our sites, education for school, schoolchildren, and we're just now starting preschool programs in Guadalupe and other places. Health and social services and collaboration with local organizations. Our deal is not to just build bricks and mortar, that's not what we're interested in doing. We're interested in keeping people housed safely and in health, so. This is our geographical footprint, so you can see that we've gone all the way down. We've done some self-help houses in Peru and Moore Park. We have a hotel in Ventura that we do, it's El Patio there, and we go all the way up to San Miguel, and we're gonna be building some sweat equity. So, you can see, there's very few jurisdictions we're not in, and we have multiple sites in all of those. And so we're in the three counties. This is our footprint, that we're not interested in going any further. This is our home on the central coast. Primary services are health clinics, youth education, as I said, we do adult education. We have about eight or nine senior sites, solely senior sites, so providing them with service of services there. Links to, and we connect the residents to local services, health clinics and what have you, whatever they need to stay housed and, and keep their rent paid, we help them find ways to do that, if they get in trouble that way. If they need counseling, family counseling, whatever it is, couple counseling, we make sure that all happens. Budgeted, a lot of times they have budgeting problems, so we help them with that. And then applications, whenever, whatever's needs going on. So, services to the residents. And that was, that's the difference that we'll do, you'll see from us, from other providers. So, community collaborations, we really believe in being involved in the communities that we have housing, you know, collaborations with other nonprofits. We collaborate with just about every nonprofit you can think of, and the communities that we, we do. And, let's see, is it the last one, collaborations?
No, you've got four more.
Okay, good. So going through that, Morgan put the presentation together, I'm just giving it. So we have over fif, almost sixteen hundred rental units in those forty-five locations, completed and are under management. As he mentioned, we never sell a project. We maintain these in perpetuity, even though the state will mandate that they're, stay affordable for, you know, tax credits for fifteen years, but they're, they have a deed restriction for fifty-five years at the state level. We have no intention of ever selling a piece of property. In fact, we, we pick them up if they become on the market, and, and make sure that they stay affordable, if there's other preservation projects in the communities that we serve. We do our own asset management, this is our own property management. We do all the regulatory compliance, making sure that they meet every federal and state requirement, onsite management, education programs, and, and house rules. I mean, we've learned how to make house rules to make sure people behave and, and be good neighbors with one another. It's important. Excuse me, I went too fast. So, nearly twelve hundred sweat equity, as I mentioned, we help people build their own homes in groups roughly about ten, and they build, you know, the families, the families will build those homes together. We, we put a supervisor on, and they'll do just about everything, except some of the professional stuff, maybe the concrete, you know, maybe some plumbing, electrical, but they do the rest of it, roofing, sheet rock, landscaping, everything else. And so they have a real pride of ownership when they do those. And then, that's the sweat equity. So they require to do forty hours per week in addition to their own job to do these houses. It usually takes about twelve months, they get a thirty-year mortgage, it's their mortgage, they keep track of it. They don't normally move once they build these, they take the pride of ownership, they're great. Sometimes we do a silent second mortgage to help them finance that. It's, must be eighty percent of eighty, area median income or less to qualify for this program. They have to have good credit, be a U.S. citizen, and then they have to get community volunteers to make that happen. So it's, it's a pretty big deal. We've been doing that, I could say, for forty-five years, we got it down, figured out. We're seeing a transition, as we talked, I think, Joey was talking about, Joey was talking about the transition. We're seeing more single moms and stuff, you know, building these homes, and it's amazing what they can do. So, that's my short presentation about us. We're here, again, to speak to affordable housing as you guys journey through this, if we can provide information to you. We're obviously offering to help you, as we did early on, maybe if you want to identify a site, we can come in and, and maybe do a, you know, an overlay on that, and we'd be willing to do that, and own a particular site that you guys suggest, and see what can be done on that site, you know, based on the topo, based on setbacks, and all the other things that are, that are necessary. Again, our projects are always catered to the particular jurisdiction, so you guys are not Cambria, and you're not Paso Robles, you're not Santa Barbara, so we would look at what makes sense here in Ojai, and that the community would think would be a good project here. So, we, we'd be, we're, continue to be interested in working with you with this journey.
Great, thank you. Mr. Fowler, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Fowler, or else the affordable committee? And then I'll, I'll open it up to the public after we ask questions, so. Councilmember Wirick?
I've had an inquiry that, and you're probably the best person to?
Maybe, or Morgan?
Lay it out, that there is, there's overlap, yet a distinction between low-income housing and affordable housing. And if you could just kind of, I mean, I've had the public inquiry about that.
Yeah.
There is overlap, but distinction.
Yeah.
And if you could kind of elaborate on that, I think it'd be helpful.
Well, it goes to the, you know, the definition of income levels.
Right.
And whether it's thirty percent of area median income, our projects are usually in the thirty to, I would say sixty percent range? Do you want to talk to, actually? Morgan is the technical guy, so he might actually be more specific about that.
Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor Laura. Morgan Benevito with People Self-Help Housing, to answer the question about the distinction between low-income and affordable. In general, that the, the product, the industry that we work in is called affordable housing. When you talk about something like low-income housing, usually in our minds, that triggers something that HUD puts a distinction on, they'll call it low-income, and what HUD means by that is it's fifty percent of area, of area median income. They also have other terms they use, like extremely low income and very low income. I'm sorry, low income is eighty percent, very, and very low is fifty percent, and then extremely low is thirty percent. So, when you use that term, for us, it means HUD has created categories, essentially, of income levels, and that, that's basically what it boils down to. The other funding programs that kind of follow that model, and they all use similar terminology, so it varies a little bit from funding program, but it's all generally in the same ballpark.
And I think you might also talk about workforce housing, and that's one that's
also misinterpreted, I mean, whether it's affordable or workforce. Workforce is really more people making, you know, you know, a hundred percent of area median income, or a hundred and twenty, or even higher, and they can afford the housing payment, but they can't make the down payment, and that's the workforce people, the millennials and those, so it's a little bit different on them as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Haney?
You know, I was reading here, and it says here, projects cannot be, projects cannot be restricted to local folks only, but can market the properties in a way that local folks would have the advantages. Can you?
Yeah, again, I'd probably ask Morgan to talk a little bit, if you can, about that, but, you know, we have to be very careful, there are fair housing rules, and you can't create priorities, you can create preferences, and there's a big distinction between those two terms, and that's important.
Sure, Mayor Laura and Councilmember Haney, just a few months ago, we created a, kind of a, I guess, a guideline, or more of a informational document, we sent it to the city manager's office, just to kind of explain how a preference system may work. A hypothetical, wasn't legal advice anyway, was just using an example of how a preference system could work to, say, provide preferences for those that work in the community, maybe their children attend a certain school district. We were trying to figure out, with fair housing laws, you can't say, here are the boundaries only these people can apply. You would be running afoul of the law. But you can create preferences that then, I guess, incentivize and kind of tilt the, tilt the odds in the favor of your, your local residents getting the housing. So we can craft that, that preference policy. If you receive HUD funding, HUD would approve that preference policy. So it kind of depends on the funding sources we use, but it's something that is, is done, can be done. I think I use an example from a small community up in Marin County, in the document I provided, just, you know, the way they did it there, and we can craft something that fits Ojai.
I, what, I do have a question. What's your experience in terms of working with other jurisdictions? Do they surplus properties, is that a common thing, or do they do a type of a disposition and agreement? What's, what's your experience with that?
Sure, Mayor Laura, it could go either way. In Carpinteria, we had an existing property called Dahlia Court, and we built recently called Dahlia Court Two, it's next door to it, we just completed a, maybe a year or two ago, and there was a city property next door that would help, that we can combine to our parcel, and they surplus it and provided it to us. Other jurisdictions do the development agreement that the city manager pointed out to you. I think in Santa Barbara, we had a very small parcel that they gave us a ninety-nine-year lease for a dollar, and it was essentially them surplusing that property to us. So it can, it could be done either way.
Is there different restrictions to the type of, of option that you, that the city decides?
Well, the way it was presented in the, the staff report, or the discussion item, it seemed like it would be more restrictive to go with option B, which would be the development agreement. There were some things in there where they were, in our opinion, kind of putting the cart before the horse, doing a lot of, maybe say, construction bids before you even have your funding, which normally we would go the other way to do that. So it would be really handcuffing us and making it extremely difficult to ensure viability of the project if we did some of that beforehand, whereas the surplusing maybe gave us a little bit more flexibility to follow what we, for us, would be, I guess, a normal process of entitlement, apply for your tax credits, get your building permit, and begin construction, just to kind of lay out a loose, you know, procedure.
And how involved do you get with the community in terms of planning these, these units?
Yeah, we, we can be as involved as a community wishes. So Ojai is a very active and engaged community, as you can see behind me, and so we know that, you know, this community's gonna want to know, what are you guys doing here? What are you proposing? So we would want to talk to the neighbors. We did this in Santa Maria, we had a neighborhood meeting, it was well-attended, we said this is what we'd like to do, we had no opposition, and then as we went through the entitlement process, we had no opposition for that project through planning commission or city council, involved a zone change, actually. So we will take a look at what's appropriate, needed for the community. Some jurisdictions may call us in and say, we have a, like Carpinteria, we have a problem property, can you help us out with this? Nobody's really gonna object to us taking over really a slumlord situation and turning that around. So normally, there's not much opposition, there's support for that. So, it depends on the situation. In this case, we know that this community's gonna be very engaged and want to know what's going on, and we would be very open with that communication.
Great. Any other questions for the housing committee, or, or the People Self-Help?
I have a, I've got a question for the housing committee, not People Self-Help, and I don't know whether Bill or Judy's the best one to answer this. The staff report pretty much points us in the direction of parcel or site eleven, which it also says is, is currently being used by our Public Works Department. They say that they can probably take land from parcel seventeen and eighteen as a, you know, to use. use for public works. But there's another parcel that's in the chart on three point thirteen, which is Parcel Ten. Did you look at Parcel Ten at all?
Uh, the answer is yes. Uh, initially, we looked at Parcel Ten. This was like a couple of years ago, almost. And we liked it. We picked that because it was in the overlay of the housing element as being part of the offering, which created the state-approved housing element.
Okay. So, Mr. Clark-
And-
Excuse me for a second. Why are we only looking at Site Eleven?
So, so Parcel Ten is deed-restricted and has to be used for publicly-owned, uh, facilities. And so originally, most of it, I should say. And so originally, they looked at it, when they looked at that deed restriction, they felt that that would not work, and therefore they moved to Parcel Eleven. So we're not recommending, um, Parcel Eleven. They are.
Uh-
Based on the deed restrictions-
But, but the deed, doesn't the overlay, uh, supersede the deed restriction? Or else we wouldn't have been able to use it as an overlay for our housing element?
Uh, we weren't aware of the deed restriction when we applied the overlay.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't realize it was there.
And who's saying that the deed restriction is still valid?
We, we had the city attorney's office review it. It's in, it's a perpetual deed restriction based on the original donation of the land to the city.
But most of the deed restrictions are only valid for fifty years.
Well, in this case, the deed restriction was from the deed of gift of City Hall and the surrounding parcels by, um, person whose name I forget, to the city, and they-
The Smith Hobson family.
Thank you. They restricted some, but not all of the parcels. Parcel Ten was one of the parcels that was restricted in part. Um, and the restriction is for that it be maintained in public ownership with a prohibition on leasing or selling with its allowance for temporary events. Uh, we looked at it. There's no limitation in terms of time. I think there's some opportunity to get ourselves out of it, which would require, under one reading, doing some sort of a quiet title proceeding against the heirs of that, of the family, who we would expect to maybe, maybe not oppose it, or to assert that under the city's broad police powers to use its land for the broader public interest. We could take it out of that restriction. Um, based on that initial analysis, we didn't analyze, uh, we analyzed the options, but not what it would take to, to move forward, based on the understanding that they were looking at Parcel Eleven. If they want to look back at Parcel Ten, or the council would like to look further at that, we'd be happy to figure out what we're looking at cost-wise.
I think if we're looking at affordable housing, which is very important, and Parcel Ten is, is so much larger than Parcel Eleven, at least it appears to be, um, I don't know why we're limiting ourselves to Parcel Eleven, particularly when it's being used for public works, for a public works yard right now. And it is, has an overlay on it. Presumably, it is part of the availability of parcels for affordable housing because of the overlay. It's a legal document, our housing element. Then there are plenty of instances where there's been deed restrictions in town, such as no alcohol in Libby Park, that was, when it was deeded to us, which, uh, we have found not to be valid restrictions. So I don't see any reason why we should limit ourselves to Eleven when Ten has already been declared to have an overlay on it.
Councilmember Wierich?
Quick follow-up. Um, have the heirs, which, of which there are many, still around in that family, very prominent family in Ventura County, have they been approached, asked, informally communicated with, or anything along those lines?
We have not approached them yet, based on the understanding that they were switching the efforts to Parcel Eleven, but we'd be happy to do so.
So, and I think part of that is that, uh, my understanding from the city attorney's office is that the heirs don't have standing to, um, renegotiate the deed restriction. I, I guess the question would be whether they would object to some-
That's my point.
-inverse condemnation-
Right.
-program that we went through.
The city attorney mentioned that, that the issue of whether they would object or not would be part of a proceeding.
Right.
And I- I think the trick that Rob was speaking to is that we couldn't just negotiate, as I read it, we couldn't just negotiate with the heirs to lift the restriction. We'd have to loop it through a court. But you're right. The question is, would they object or not?
Uh, Councilmember Haney?
I guess, Matt, this is part of the learning curve is, is, again, this is another option that, that we didn't put in our packet. Even if it's way out there in left field, it still should have been part of our packet. It's, it's just another option. That, it's just a learning curve. Um, I had a question for, um, the gentleman from, uh, People's Self Help. And I, um, affordable housing, um, we're going to move someone in, and is the goal to keep them there, or is the goal to help them move on? And if the goal is to help them move on, um, what's the average timeframe that someone stays in one of these units?
So, our goal and part of our mission, Commissioner Haney, is to move them on, self-sufficiency, and not have them stay forever. Uh, we have the housing rules, and we have a lot of federal government regulations and whatever, that they make that quite difficult for us. So, um, you know, our move-on rate isn't, isn't as high as we'd like it to be. Uh, and it's, and it's pretty low. And I don't know if you know the statistics on that.
Um, Councilmember Haney, Mayor Lara, uh, I don't have any statistics on the move-on rate. Um, I would also point out that our after-school program is an effective tool for upward mobility. Uh, we see a lot of our students going through our after-school program, going on to college and breaking that cycle of poverty. So, um, even if we're not successful in getting the primary resident to move on, although some do, some go to our self-help ownership, um, we are seeing a lot of success in our after-school program, getting the children to go on to college and have successful careers. So it can happen one of two ways. The, the initial family moves up, gets a better job, they move on to other things, or perhaps our children move up to bigger and better things as well.
We're also seeing some new programs that are coming out that are creating savings programs for the families that move into these multifamily. It's another way to help them move on. So they create a savings account that we would match, and, uh, we have to figure out how that gets funded and everything. It's just getting started under the parts of the country of them finding money to get a down payment so they can move into a sweat equity. But our deal is, you know, move them from a hotel to, to a multifamily, to a sweat equity, to, I mean, the idea is to move them along the pendulum, and we, you know, we're just trying to do that.
And then, uh, just to follow up on that is, the, the two types that we're talking about is constructing, um, a home using sweat equity-
Correct.
-versus building units and, and moving people into those units. Um, when you look at, when you look at this sites, um, would you be able to give us, uh, um, if we, if we move in that direction, two, two ways of looking at it? How many units can we do if we did sweat equity versus how many units can we have, um, if we just, um, built them ourselves?
Yeah. I don't know that we're looking at sweat equity for any of your sites, but, uh-
We haven't. Uh, Mayor Lara and, and Councilmember Haney, uh, we haven't really discussed this, the self-help ownership. Um, it was our, um, impression, talking to Bill and Judy, as well as, um, helping through the housing element at the, at the time, that the, the question was basically geared towards rental housing. Um, of course, we'd be happy to look at self-help ownership. It usually takes a little bit more, um, land than to take, for example, Site Eleven being about one-point-seven acres. Uh, if you're looking at Ten, single-family home lots, you're looking at a, a few more acres than that. Um, so, go ahead.
By me asking this question, I was, um, kind of looking at Ten and Eleven. So I'm just not going to limit myself to one. If we're going to do something like this, it might benefit the community if we looked at two types, if we were going to look at this. Again, it, to me, it's options.
Sure. No, absolutely. And, and I'm glad you brought that up. It's something that we hadn't really discussed, but I'm glad it's, it's out there. We, we'd love to talk about both things that we do. Um, and if the council wants to talk about that, we'd be happy to.
I think it's the millennials that won't leave.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know, I know.
I wasn't going to say that.
They won't leave the house.
If you provide internet then-
Before you leave, I, I have a question.
Councilmember Wierich?
Um, I have a perception, please recalibrate me if it's incorrect, okay, that, I was very impressed in the workshop, when you had your design partners-
Morgan, right.
-talking about, um, the innovations, basically, that they, they partner you with in terms of how they build these things for the goal of affordability. And they also emphasize that you've got to have a certain, um, size threshold also, that, that the number of units you build at a time affects affordability as well as your design innovations. Obviously, in terms of program, uh, you have thresholds for efficient program implementation of the, what you were just talking about. So my perception is, is that the number of units you're building matters significantly to achieve your goals. And there's a big difference between, say, a dozen units and thirty or forty units in that regard.
Commissioner Wierich, your perception would be correct. And, um, you know, we, um, you know, I know in the, in the staff report in your element, it talks about, you know, the, the maximum number and, you know, the, the possible. We saw there's some problems with some of that and what you're going to need in order to achieve your goals of overall, you know, your housing element requirements. And, um, you know, uh, so how are you going to do that? I think that's going to be an important piece of information, and, uh, it's very complicated. Affordable housing has become very complicated. It's not somebody who can just walk into this and do this. And, and, uh, so to try and answer your question, we typically like to get an acre or something, you know, to, two acres. The larger the parcel, the better. Uh, and, and if we can get to that forty number, that's the number that we know economically supports that site. It puts, uh, a manager on-site. That means those residents will have somebody twenty-four-seven that they can go to and, and deal with their issues, make sure the site is clean, make sure they behave as a good neighbor, uh, all those kinds of things. So, and it also economically drives the, the, the project because, uh, it gets very complicated. But when you're building, say, a fifteen-million-dollar project, and, and, and you can only support debt because the rents are so low of a couple of million dollars, you got to get to the rest of that. Where does it come from? It comes from these partnerships that we get with, mostly they're banks who do these, those CRA credit. Well, we just, we just got approved, uh, and did one with, where Wells Fargo, Chase, B of A, and I'm trying to think of the last one, all competing for the funding of a project. They bring in the equity. So we bring equity into the community of that other, you know, thirteen million dollars in the, in the form of either, you know, um, funding, and that gets the rents down, and that, uh, all those economics make it work so that those rents will not only pay the debt, it'll also keep the site looking beautiful, and after fifteen years, it'll still look beautiful in a, in a, in addition to the neighborhood. So, so you do need to get to that sort of sweet spot. If we can get a little bit better, it just gets easier, right?
Thank you. Any further questions? Not with, thank you. At that, I do have a good amount of speakers cards, so I'm going to start with Noel Douglas Roth.
I can't speak. He's on the committee. Hi, Mayor Lara and, uh, city council. My name is Noel Douglas Roth. I moved here in two thousand and six, and I pretty quickly became Deborah Pendry's assistant, uh, at the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. I just wanted to begin by thanking you so much for your support of the Green Coalition to assist the city of Ojai to achieve its goals in the sustainable roadmap. And, um, when I came here, I came to be a caregiver, uh, but more than that, I came to administrate and run the, um, Lomita location in Miners Oaks, which is now called At Home in Ojai. But when I pulled up with my U-Haul and all my belongings, I got the fateful call that the deal was down. And I never did open that, but I found the city of Ojai wonderful, and I knew I wasn't going to turn back to move to the Bay Area. And, uh, within a matter of a couple of months, I located at the home of Dr. George Meinig, who wrote a column in the newspaper. Some of you might know him. He, he was a dentist here in Ojai, and he wrote a health column for the Ojai Valley News for years. And I stayed with him until he passed on. And I got into a loop, uh, which I was in when I was living in Marin County, of being a caregiver. Um, I'd been a caregiver for fifteen years. Usually, I would live in the home of the elder, uh, and I would work for the family who lived elsewhere. Um, and they paid me, and they were my employers, but I lived in the home with their elder loved one. And I continued to do that here in Ojai until just recently, when I kind of burned out and wanted to take a break. And at that time, I realized what Ojai rents were becoming. And at a caregiver's salary, I make top dollar. Um, but most caregivers don't even make near what I make. And yet, caregiving is one of the most important jobs in this retirement community, Ojai. And, uh, in order to live here, um, I could never be a caregiver. Um, so, lucky me, I applied to live at one of two affordable housing units or communities in Ojai, mine being called Whispering Oaks. And that's where you pay thirty percent of your income. And that amount will go up or down depending on your income. I've never heard anybody say we should, uh, plan to leave soon or be put into a plan to leave. It's just thirty percent. If my income goes up, I pay a little more. If my income goes down, I pay a little less. If I inherit a lot of money, then I pay thirty percent of not the amount of money that I inherited, but just the, um, interest on the bank account. And, uh, that, to me, is affordable. And between my low income as a, uh, provider for the Ojai Valley Green Coalition on staff, paid by the hour, and also my caregiving, there is just no way that I would be able to live in the Ojai Valley. So I praise the area housing authority of Ventura County for creating, uh, Whispering Oaks, and also the Roth Apartments, which are more family-oriented. I think they're a great model of how to keep people who need to live here, including teachers, police officers, uh, firemen. Uh, the real estate scene in California is, has become outrageous. It's over the top. We're, we're stealing the future from our children. It's, it's not sustainable, and I just, uh, really support the city of Ojai, uh, creating affordable housing in that thirty percent of your income range, and keep the gardeners here, keep the, the caregivers here, keep the teachers living in the community that they serve. And, uh, if there was anything else I want to tell you, it would be that just recently, I listened to a report on, uh, KPCC radio, which is Ojai's, um, you can get it on your radio in your house, not just in your car. Um, and that's a NPR, National Public Radio Station, and they did a, a report on housing in Marin County, which is where I came from. And today, a family has to make two-hundred-thousand dollars a year to afford to pay the rent on a two-bedroom house or apartment. So when you say, you know, people will phase out of their, the, the low-income housing to something, you know, next, what's next is outrageous. It is totally unsustainable. And I'm just really glad that you're thinking of the future of Ojai with, uh, low-income housing. And I point the direction to the, um, area housing authority of, uh, Ventura County and Newberry Park. They're doing a great job. I'm so glad to give them my rent. And, um, nobody's trying to move me on, make more money. It's, it's just, give people a place to live, make it affordable. And it's, it's actually very quite pleasant there.
Thank you. So you do live in the city limits?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
Pete, and if you could please stay, if you live in the city or not, um, Pete?
Left.
Oh, Pete, please. Pat McPherson?
Thank you, Sherry.
Mayor Lara, members of the council, I'm here tonight as a private citizen, uh, not affiliated at all with Ojai Flow, although some of what I discussed tonight and my perspective is from five years working with Ojai Flow and seeing this whole issue about Golden State Water. I understand some people's desire to provide subsidized housing, and I see, just from the talk that just went on, a lot of it's very well justified. However, it's important that we not forget that the property we're talking about here is owned by all of the citizens of Ojai. It's a real asset. Hopefully, in a few days, the California Supreme Court will make a decision regarding the Golden State Water appeal. If the Supreme Court doesn't take the case, which we hope they don't, then Casitas can issue bonds, the first set of bonds, for approximately five million dollars. Until the final purchase occurs, which is maybe a year, year and a half, something like that, we ratepayers are going to have to pay for the bond in addition to the Golden State Water rates. State Water rates. So, we're going to be out of, we're going to be spending more than we are today. This effort for locally-owned water is far from being over. We have a long ways to go, and, and if things go the way we want it to, we will just start it after next Tuesday. We should never forget that eighty-seven percent of the voters voted for, and, and they also contributed personal money and time to buy out Golden State Water. With that in mind, if any city property is to be disposed of, we should honor these citizens who are stepped up and who are going to tax themselves $60 million, and give the money to them to pay that bond down. Because it is city, it's their property. We also should, no matter what the state says, remember that we're in a drought, and we have water rationing going on. How we can even think of adding more housing today, when every one of us must conserve thirty-six percent, and we see our trees dying. So, my suggestion is for the city council to table this until a later time. Thank you.
Trudy Ingrid?
Good evening. I was going to provide comments on the proposal, and I realized I perhaps didn't have enough information, since I didn't see the previous presentation. So, I'm hoping there's a, be another opportunity to provide comment on the proposal at some other time.
Could you say, do you live in the city?
I do live in the city. But is it appropriate for me, at this time, to ask a question to the self-help folks?
You could ask the question.
Okay. I was wondering if you have incorporated any green building technologies into the design and building of the buildings, as well as the landscape? And if so, what might some of those be?
Yes, we, yes, we do. We, we see all the Title 24 requirements, far beyond that, I think, another seventeen percent? Again, Morgan has that details, excuse me.
Mayor Lara, the question is, what type of green building techniques do we use? And to the audience member, the funding sources sometimes come, and anytime you get public funding, it comes with strings attached. They say, if you want a public source, or public funding, you have to adhere to perhaps this green program, for example, Green Point Rating, or a LEED program. So, depending on the funding source, we'll comply with a certain green program. The tax credit program gives you the option of using a Green Point or LEED. I'm doing a LEED Platinum project right now in Santa Maria, USDA funding. So, yeah, you know, it's, it's a highly efficient housing, based on the funding sources that we're using.
Great. Thank you.
And I would say, we've also looked at every one of our sites, of converting those to drip systems, and, you know, doing everything we can do, letting grass grow, and all the other things that the neighbors are doing.
Great. Thank you. Trudy, if you could come, is that the end of, is that your question, or any further comment?
Well, I say I only have two minutes left, so I don't have enough time to present the comments that I had anticipated, but maybe I'll take a stab at it. Four years ago, I left, I've, I've lived and worked in Ojai since 1987, and four years ago, I left, because my job was ending, and I couldn't afford to stay here. So, for various reasons, I moved back here about five months ago, sort of on a wing and a prayer, and not knowing where I was going to live. And it turned out that I can only afford to rent a room in a house right now, which I've never been in this position before, and it's not the best situation, to say the least. In looking for housing, I go on Craigslist, and I see ads like this, one-bedroom house, $1,750 a month, small studio with kitchenette, $1,100 a month, kitchenette being code for no cooking facilities, which, of course, make it much less affordable than it already is. Without a place of my own, I've lost the things that are most precious to me: privacy, solitude, quiet, decision-making power, a place to be creative. Lack of affordable housing not only impacts people like me in profound ways, but I think it also robs the community of our best selves, and our ability to be productive and generous. I raised a beautiful daughter in Ojai. I did a land use analysis called "The Ecological Footprint of the Ojai Valley" that I shared. And I participated in many other commun, community, I participated in the community in many other ways over the past twenty-eight years. I'd really like to stay here, and so, I support, I stand here and support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Weed? And again, could you, if you could stay, if you live in the city limits?
No, I live in a house, actually. Steve Weed is my name. We live in 505 East Oak Street. We're here in the city. I want to make two lines of comment at this point. First of all, I've been impressed with what I've heard, as far as this particular plan, and the support that it seems to be getting from the council. But I think when you look at affordable housing, you have to look at it in a larger context. And that context is, what is our city's future? Not five years from now, not, you know, tomorrow, but twenty years from now. And from everything that I've judged in living in the city for five years, it seems as if people are content to see this go to more tourist-based industry. And I think what's really needed is to take a look at housing, in conjunction, parking, in conjunction with schools, and in conjunction with all the other factors that go to support the tourist-based economy. Certainly, affordable housing is one of those. But I don't see a, a clear roadmap for that. The zoning and so forth that we've had so forth, it's just been a reflection of our city historically, and it's been a little patchwork, okay? And if you're really going to grow a city and have people invest in it, they have to see that it's becoming a city that's amenable to their business. And if that's tourism primarily, we need to take a look at abandoned housing, we need to take a look at parking, we need to look at a lot of different things. So, I like what I'm hearing here, but I think that's only part of the context of what we need to do as a city. And unfortunately, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease, you know? Somebody comes in and talks about, gee, their Neige wall is falling down, and it's causing a problem, that's what gets attention. But the bigger picture is that we really have to look at what we want our city to be, and certainly, affordable housing is one thing. The second thing I'd like to mention is that, we've read a couple of stories tonight about average people in Ojai, and the, the issues that they face in housing, and I'd like to amplify that a little bit. Last time I stood before you, talking about housing, well, two times ago, I talked about how the house that we originally rented here in Ojai had some significant issues with the drainage. And in fact, we left there, and that property continued to go into disrepair. That property, now, is doing a short-term rental. The challenge that we have is that we need to take a look at the other housing stock, not just the housing stock we're proposing. We need to make sure that's habitable. Okay? You, you know, some people have talked about this, and it's just, it's truly gross, you know? You get eighteen thousand, eighteen hundred dollars, and what do you get? Well, you get what nobody else wants. So, it's a serious issue. And, you know, it's not just the service people that suffer from this. Quite honestly, if you look at the service people, hey, maybe these are aspiring artists or musicians that are waiting tables. Maybe there are, you know, people that don't have good education or good means, and those people end up sharing housing. They're not living in little hovels. A lot of times, they're sharing housing, because that's what they want to do to live here. Maybe because they have family roots here, maybe because they want to go hiking. I don't know, whatever it is. But, that, that's a challenge. But then, there's also people that you would know and totally respect. It's not the people that, you know, are in dire straits. Three weeks ago, I went to pick up a bookshelf from a lady who was moving, and I got there, and she, you know, I talked with her for a minute, you know, she's mid-sixties, fixed income. She had been in that two-bedroom apartment for four years, and seen a rent increase of $300. Now, fortunately, she has family, so she's not having to move to Tucson or Phoenix to make ends meet. But that's, that's significant to her older population. And, you know, when I ran for school board, I was quite surprised, because one of the candidates that received a large number of votes indicated that she was living in public housing. Now, she's a church member, she does a lot of volunteer work, and she spends a lot of time at the school. Hey, are there people like that that would like to live in Ojai? Yeah. Affordable housing is really needed. And, like I said, I, I haven't spent the time in looking at the nuances of this proposal, but whatever happens, this is certainly a piece of keeping Ojai sustainable and livable. So, I really encourage you to search your souls about looking at this as a major issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dale Hansen?
Good evening. I'm Dale Hansen. I live in the city of Ojai. I'm not going to carry on a lot, because it's already been said, but as I've mentioned before, here, in, in the real estate office that I work in, I have people coming in every day. Today, I had three people coming in looking for rentals. And, you know, I give them a list of landlords that I know of that may have something. I know that currently, they don't. And I know that these people have, it's always been a problem finding rentals in Ojai, especially affordable rentals. But now, with all the vacation rentals, it's almost impossible. Our rental stock has gone to vacation rentals. And that, I think, we, I know we are looking at it, and we have to continue. I have a lot of people that I know that live and work here in Ojai. Some of them live in a unit where there's no kitchen. You might call that affordable, but when you have to eat out, or, you know, get by like that, that's really not the way to do it. And many are forced to live elsewhere and drive into Ojai in order to keep their jobs. All of this has a negative effect on our schools. Because if a family can't afford to buy here, then if they can't afford to rent here, because there's nothing around, there's nothing affordable, so there, therefore, we have a declining enrollment in school. I think that the need for affordable rentals is really clear. And as far as the water issue is concerned, and the traffic issue, most of the people, as I understand, we try to reach out to the people that are already here, at least already works, they're already here. They're already using the water, and, and the traffic is already here. So, I don't know that it's going to create an extra burden on water and traffic. And rather we go with parcel eleven, or ten, or whatever. I really hope we move forward with this program as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anita Hickson?
Anita Hendricks.
Oh, Hendricks.
Good evening.
And if you could say, if you live in the city?
I live in the city of Ojai. I am absolutely supportive of affordable housing. We have a grave need for it. I know people who are living under, it's not, it's not just a surface thing. People are overcrowded, people are on each other's nerves. I mean, there's abuse that occurs because people are forced to live in overcrowded situations, and, not always, but, you know, there's, there's real hardship going on that people, that are beyond the statistics. But I want, I want to mention that the mission statement states, workforce, it's particularly set up for workforce families. And I think that's okay, but I don't think it should be solely limited to that. Workforce is just defined with $89,300 yearly income. To qualify, that's the income category, apparently. Now, hopefully, I'm misunderstanding this. Yet, forty-three, forty-six percent of Ojai residents, according to the data I'm getting from these reports, is below the median income. There are people who are not working, who are retired. We have, our population is older, in general, than the rest of Ventura County. So, we have older people who may not be working, who may be retired on fixed income, who sorely are in need of housing. The other term, family, I don't have anything against families, I think families should have homes too. But a third of our population in Ojai lives alone. Are we not going to include them in it? Thirty-nine point two percent are non-family households. Can we say households instead of families, so we can include these other people? Can we, instead of saying workforce, think of another term that would be inclusive of the forty-six percent that are below that median income? The lowest income category is extremely low income, and that is $26,800 for a family of four. Now, that's not in the workforce definition. SCAG says we need forty-four extremely low-income families. This is their projection, not that we're necessarily going to do it, we haven't done it yet, 2004, 2014 to 2024. And they're proposing possibly eleven units on this property. Three of the four affordable housing developments or projects in Ojai are family-oriented. One, Whispering Oaks, is for elders, and I think there's some other categories, like disabled, and I think there's some other qualifying characteristics as well. And Whispering Oaks is the largest. But, I know of several older women right now, we all know that we don't have enough housing, period, in Ojai, but I know of several older women recently, who qualified for subsidized housing, because the housing, their incomes are so low, they went through a Idris process to qualify for it, and then, on top of that, they get a lottery, and they're lucky if they're chosen for a lottery, and they tried to get housing here in Ojai. Three of them, in recent times, could not get it, even with government subsidized vouchers. They could not get it. These are the very same people who are not included in workforce and family. They were single, older women. One of them raised her children here in town, she has grown family here. The other one was a journalist in the local paper for years. I just talked to her, she said, I didn't get it. I went through all, she jumped through so many hoops, and she didn't get it. I, I, I'm impressed with self-help housing. I was actually familiar with them in Santa Barbara, and it's wonderful, the support services they give, the educative, you know, for families, they'll have tutoring, on the premises for the children, a lot of supports, and I think it's a great program. So, I would like to encourage you all to move forward, but I would also like you to open up the parameters of who is eligible for this housing. It's sorely needed. And the issue of vacation rentals, we do have some housing that would be going to, to people in the lower income, who, because of vacation rentals, aren't getting it. I've been in this community for over thirty years. I tried to get in one affordable housing years ago, and my income was too low to be eligible for affordable housing, because that was in that workforce category. I had too low income to be eligible for affordable housing. So, please, please expand the definitions to include other people. We really need affordable housing, and I really appreciate you all looking at this issue, you know, seriously, and trying to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ginger Case? Ginger Case? I don't have any more speaker, oh, you, Ginger?
No, I'm not.
Oh, oh, I was going to say, if anybody else wishes to speak, if you could state your name, and if you live in the city limits?
Hi, I'm Peggy LaSara, and I'm moving into the city limits. I'm moving onto Avenida de la Vereda. I'm fortunately landing in a beautiful studio designed by John Royne's, the Taj Mahal, as it's affectionately known, the Playa de, so I scored. But I'm an oddball. I moved to Ojai at the last turn of the century. I lived here for almost ten years. At the end of a relationship, I moved up to the Bay Area. I lived in the northern tip of the Silicon Valley, and I started a business. I have a small pharmaceutical firm. I have great hopes for it. I have the former CEO of Macy's on my board. I have the guy that started Ancestry.com, Jim Barnett. I have Chakra Earth Song of our own, Kavita. started Ancestry dot com, Jim Barnett, I have Chakra Earth Song of our own, Cavita. I plan on, you know, not needing to care about affordable housing. But when I landed back in Ojai, I had, I had a landing place, I thought I'll look for a place to live. I've been here for fourteen months, I've lived five different places, and I could tell you, you know, about each of those situations, I'll spare you, it's late. It's nice seeing you at nine o'clock at night instead of six o'clock in the morning at Toastmasters, Yeah, I was asked to speak by Dale Hansen, I'm happy to do that, particularly because a friend of mine, who is a long-term teacher for the Ojai Unified School District, can't be here tonight, she's got an important job interview tomorrow because she can't afford to live in Ojai. She grew up in Ojai, she became a teacher, she served the Ojai Unified District, and she can't afford to live here because she's a single woman, she has one income, she can't even afford a one-bedroom place in Ojai. I came back to Ojai because I love Ojai. What I came back to isn't the Ojai I remember. It's crowded, it's impossible to find a reasonable place to live if you weren't instantiated in the community as part of the landed gentry early on. I'm noticing a decrease in creativity in Ojai, artistic creativity, and I think, you know, there's a, there's a belief here that business in Ojai is what business has been. I hear a lot from, and I appreciate the Chamber of Commerce and I appreciate the merchants here. I spend, I calculated today in response to one of the merchants when I posted something on Facebook, I got reamed by a merchant who said, you know, Ojaians buy in big box stores, they don't, you know, they're not spending on the community. I spend five-ninths of my income in Ojai, five-ninths of it. I spend it on food, food that's grown here. But we, you know, we're, we're constructing a culture here based on merchants who are selling things for people who, for the millennials who don't have the homes for these things. I think we really need to step back and start looking at some really creative solutions. I just, I had a few ideas while I was sitting here. As Anita pointed out, we have, you know, fifty, forty-five percent of the population is low income, either low income, very low income, or extremely low income, so we're talking about almost half of the population. We have forty-six percent rental units, but they're not affordable rental units, they're not owned by people who live in Ojai for the most part, they're being rented by people who don't live in Ojai, it's not serving Ojai. Thirty-nine point three percent of the people, I have thirty-nine point three, Anita had thirty-nine point two, are people living alone. And so when I'm listening to you, Mr. Fowler, and you are saying that we could come up with some solutions that were Ojai solutions, just vamping here, they're tiny houses, they're not ideal circumstances, but they're self-contained units, thirty-nine percent of our population is living alone. They're above ground, they can be on wheels. Land that, you know, is encumbered in one way or another with deeds doesn't have to really be dealt with in a long-term way if you're building tiny houses that have compostable toilets. We don't have middle, we don't have a class of people here who are tradespeople, who are, I mean, we have some builders, a lot of them are unemployed. Why can't we, you know, designate a certain amount of resources to creating a profit, nonprofit tiny house company that exports tiny houses, maybe green tiny houses with compostable toilets, exports them, sells them, bring in students from Nordoff that are in the shop classes, have higher construction people, so create jobs here, create training programs here, build tiny houses, sell them, take the money and invest it, pay off, pay down the water bill. Buy, buy some land for an intentional community where you can have elderly people taking care of children so single mothers can go to school. There are all kinds of creative things that can be done here. And, you know, just off the top of my head, these tiny house companies that already exist, Timberland Tiny House sells its most popular model built for sixty thousand dollars. The kits cost thirty thousand dollars. I called three people that do workshops on building these things, I said, how long does it take you to build them? Well, the first one takes five weeks, the second one takes three weeks, and we're cranking them out every two weeks. That's a thirty thousand dollar profit. We could start with, you know, these package deals, take the money, you know, pay the construction person, pay the students who are learning a reasonable amount of money, and still be generating an enormous profit. And there are lots of creative things that can be done, and I just hope Ojai finds a solution, because if it keeps creating the culture that it's creating, it's going to be an ugly place to live, and I'm not going to want to live here.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just curious, while the Speaker had many good points, she never said whether she was for or against what's before us tonight, so I'd be interested in knowing.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's secure the land, and let's think of a really creative way to use it, like we don't even have to build anything on the land, and we can generate both housing and jobs.
Great, thank you. Anybody else in public? Yes, Sue, and if you could please state your name and if you live in the city?
Sue Williamson and I live in the city. I'd just like to say that, you know, I didn't get to comment before about the rentals, the vacation rentals, but I really think what's happening is they are not only eliminating the rental housing market, but they're also raising the rents all over town. I mean, I am hearing of landlords raising rents from twenty-five hundred for a two-bedroom house to thirty-five hundred. I mean, just in a normal little neighborhood over where I live in, around Terramina, I mean, that's absolutely crazy, and that's, I really think it's a result of this incredible inflationary situation that's being created by the vacation rentals, and I think we really need to regulate that somehow. And I am very much in favor of any kind of low-income housing, it is desperately needed. You know, we are trying to provide that for people, but it's, there's so much of a demand, and there's no place for people to go, it's just crazy. We're, you know, we get so many calls for people looking, and I have friends who, I mean, it's just a desperate situation, and to be honest, Ojai's becoming awfully boring, because it's all becoming rich people, and it's really quite, I mean, it's just not, I can really feel the vibration changing here of, you know, I don't, a lot of people you don't see around anymore, they're just disappearing, people that were really creative, and, and I just feel we're ruining our community by not having affordable housing here. So I really urge you to do something about this, and this sounds pretty good, and so do her ideas, too.
Any other, thank you, Sue, any other, and again, if you could state your name and if you live in the city?
My name is Rodrick Green, I live at fifty-six fifty Reeves Road, I do not live in the city of Ojai. Right now, we're in the fourth year of the worst drought in the memory of most people who live here. Lake Acetus, I recently read, is below fifty percent of capacity, groundwater levels are Recently, a well-qualified meteorologist printed an article that Southern California may be in a situation where the last century was the wettest in one thousand, three hundred years, the kind of climate we're now experiencing may be closer to the norm than we want to believe. This is not the time for the city to cram more people into the available space in high-density housing. Now, there's been a little cognitive dissonance here, I've heard some people suggest that, well, don't worry, because the people who will be renting affordable housing already live here. If you build more housing units, you increase the population of the city. You increase the population who will draw on the already diminishing water resources that we have. This is not a time to consider an affordable, a high-density housing project.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak that hasn't spoken? If not, then I'm going to turn it back to the council, and I do want to address the recommendations here. We have the recommendations from the Affordable Housing Committee wanting to know if we affirm possibly whether it be surplusing or disposition and development agreement to certain parcels that the city owns for affordable housing, and what our next step is. I know in our staff report, we have staff's recommendation, but I would want to see if we have any other questions regarding the administrative report, or if we could take a vote on whether we want to affirm the parcels for affordable housing.
Could, could I just explain the situation with the Public Works Yard for your information? If you look at the map on page three dash two, the parcel that has the overlay is the one with the last two numbers, O two, and the parcels, other parcels we own are the ones that end in one, seven, and one, eight. Currently, the Public Works Yard overlaps onto the parcel labeled O two, and it would be very hard to constrain them into the triangular area that's left if we were to take that whole parcel away. So we would hope that if there is to be affordable housing on this area, that there'd be flexibility to work with the potential developer or the designer to accommodate the needs of public works somehow, probably by keeping some public works on parcel two and maybe adding parcels seventeen and eighteen to the affordable housing.
Now, affordable, the SBL overlay is in applied to the eighteen and seventeen, is that correct?
Not at this time, no.
Could it be applied?
Certainly, it's a zone change.
It's a zone, okay. Any other questions regarding the staff report? Or any questions in general with affordable housing? If not, then I would then want to first see if the council in general wants to surplus, either surplus or, the other option would be disposition or development agreement of the parcel number eleven, and possible the two parcels above eleven, and now we're including parcel ten. So it's, so I want to first have that discussion before we provide staff direction with the second step. And Mr. Summers, any comments?
Just wanted, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of your decision tonight, you don't need to make the firm decision to either surplus, either parcel ten or parcel eleven, or else to direct staff to start negotiations with people self-help housing on a DDA. Rather, tonight, the decision is, yes, staff, go forward, and look at a proposal from self-help housing for eleven and perhaps as well, ten, look at how we would lift the deed restriction for ten, and look at how, what would be involved in adding in seventeen and eighteen to parcel site eleven. And so in other words, it's, it's a step to, a decision to move forward, but it's not a hard surplus decision tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Wirick?
Yeah, you've sort of mirrored my thoughts. I think that we're not in a position to go that far tonight. I think that we are in a position to direct staff, if the council so wishes, to look at all possible options with respect to parcel ten, which frankly is a much more practical site than parcel eleven is. And to, in conjunction with that, look forward on the concept review from Peoples, I don't think we should be contracting with anybody to do that, I mean, Peoples, I think, would be in a position of looking at those two sites if they wanted to, look at two, I have to ask them. And we look at the options on the deed restriction for parcel ten, we look at the parcel eleven with or without the additional, but I don't think that we have enough information for the kind of decision that you're asking for tonight. But I do think we could give direction on, look at all possible options, especially on parcel ten, and indicate an intent, was what I would recommend, to proceed with a concept review.
Okay. And I could definitely, I understand your point of view, and I guess in a way, I kind of was getting that way, but in a different perspective. And I, me too, I, I feel like we could, I would be in support in asking people self-help if they're willing to do a concept review. I know in our staff report, we indicate a possibility of possibly helping out with that concept review. I don't know if that's something that the council would like, or if People's Self-Help rather has a preference in that, but it is in our staff report.
Yeah, I think, you know, that was our, our belief and hope that the council would get there, that, you know, we would help the city really look at a concept on both parcels and decide what public works needs are of the other sites if necessary. I mean, we don't know, I think you're right, Commissioner, right, let's wade into this, you know, let's take it slow, there's no rush here, and figure out what the public works needs are, what the deed restrictions are on lot ten, if that's something, but at this point, I don't think you're committing to either parcel or, except...
Would you, would you?
Yes.
Provide the concept review?
Yeah, so we looked at...
Would you rather do it that way than the city participate in terms of paying for some of?
I think what we would do is what we did originally for you guys, you know, a couple of years ago, is we commissioned, I mean, we worked with a local architect that, you know, knows this city and whatever, and they've agreed to donate their time, we would donate our time, and basically do it at no cost of a concept, at least to get you to start to wrap your heads around it, how many units, where would they be located, what kind of troubles would we have with the topography, public work needs, you know, the deed restrictions if they're on there, and let's start to answer some of the questions. And I think that what the committee is looking for, is there a commitment by the council to move forward with affordable housing? If you're saying yes, yes, we would be willing, more than willing, to come back and provide concept drawings and start to, to put some, you know, parameters and some discussion points for you guys to actually look at.
Okay.
And I think also...
On both parcels.
A concept review allows, if you're willing to do it on both parcels, that allows, you know, some body to the idea, which is going to be much more, I think, welcoming and productive in terms of public input and public response, so I think it really advances that process as well. You know, I just, I just think that's, that's the best approach.
Any other comments from council, Councilmember Haney?
Well, I agree with that, if they're willing to do something like that, I mean, that's extraordinary and just unbelievably generous on your part.
Your mission is to provide affordable housing, and that's, you know...
The, but prior to that, I think I'd like, if Matthew could give me just a better understanding between surplusing and the disposition and development agreement. What, in your, in your, in your writings here, you're saying that that's the way you would lean towards the city because it gives us more control, and the question is control of what, that's what I have on my thing. So can, can you briefly explain the two, and then maybe the advantages and disadvantages of each, if, if you could?
Certainly. The surplusing approach is a city declares the property to be surplus, meaning that it decides that it doesn't need it for the city's requirements. That starts a, the next step is to then decide that it wants to dispose of the property. If the city then decides to dispose a surplus property, it triggers a process under the government code that requires analysis of, an offer for proposals is sent out to a list of agencies, which includes local affordable housing developers, then the city would receive a number of proposals, or could, then has to evaluate those proposals, and then pick one to sell it to. And there's a statutory set of preferences as to who gets first pick if there's more than one proposal. If no one... If no one on the list of preferred developers, which is usually affordable housing, schools, recreation, land conservancies, Ohai Valley Land Conservancy, for example, that kind of thing, those types of nonprofits and other governments as well. If no one among the preferred list presents a proposal, then the city can sell it on the open market. As opposed to, I'll first review what they are and then I'll do the pro con. A disposition and development agreement would be, the city enters into an agreement with a selected developer. And usually, there'd be some sort of a developer selection process first. Perhaps a request for proposals. Look at some proposals. We clearly have one who's in the room. We would look, start conversations with them. Often, it's done entering first into an exclusive negotiating agreement, which provides that the city and the developer would negotiate, agree to negotiate exclusively for some period of time over the terms of a proposal. Then the agreement would lay out conveyance of the property, what will be done with the property, any affordable housing restrictions, how long those restrictions would last, what level of affordable housing, whether it's low, very low, extremely low, which a lot of would be determined both by what the city wants and by whatever the underlying funding source is. If it's HUD or state money or whatever the restrictions are. And would often also go fairly deep in the weeds in terms of design constraints, any kind of land restrictions over other uses on the site, anything with regard to public access, public art, that kind of thing. It's a fairly comprehensive set of restrictions, or set of, not restrictions, but set of agreement, terms of the agreement. And then it's all approved and adopted by the council after planning commission review. And usually, it's adopted, the agreement is adopted, then the project process progresses through the entitlement stage. And then the land is conveyed from the city to the developer once the entitlements are secured and once the funding is secured. In terms of pro or con, from the city's perspective, if this property is surplused, city loses control over what the project would look like, over what kind of restrictions there would be, over the levels of affordable housing, what level of housing. But the city, of course, would retain its usual design review powers. And for this type of project, it would almost certainly require a design review permit. So there would be that aesthetic control. A disposition and development agreement, in terms of benefits, provides the city a much greater amount of control over what the project looks like, whether it's a sweat equity or a rented property, how long the restrictions are in place, what the levels of affordability, et cetera. Downsides, a DDA is a significant amount of additional staff time and legal time and costs to negotiate, to look at it. It takes a fair amount more council time to look at what the council would like that agreement to look like, what the restrictions would be. It provides lower flexibility to the developer to both make their project work and can sometimes create friction with the funding agencies, although we usually try to structure them to, everybody fits together. City's requirements, developer's requirements, funding agencies. Ideally, it all fits together. Additionally, long run, if a project is done with a DDA, then there's a set of continuing restrictions, which can make things more complicated in the future should something change. Whereas if the property is surplused and simply sold to them, then they own it. And now, if they pick it up as an affordable housing developer, there are certain restrictions that are built into statute that they would have to maintain even under the surplusing process. I believe it's a 55-year requirement for affordability to secure that preference. In terms of, I think that's the pros and the cons on both, and I'm happy to speak to either of them further.
Any further questions, councilmember Haney?
Thank you. I just needed a better understanding of it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Wirick?
Following up on the deed restriction issue. The court's going to be looking at, I would think, elements of case law, public purpose of the intent, those kinds of things.
You mean the deed restriction on parcel 10?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. It seems like there might be some differences then between surplusing and DDA in terms of the likely success of having a modification of the deed restriction. In other words, a DDA would more precisely define a public purpose that the court might find amenable.
I think that's true, but I haven't analyzed that question exactly.
I'm just asking the question.
I think that's likely true that a court would, because we could demonstrate definitively to the court-
It's serving a definite public purpose.
That this is serving a particular public purpose because the land is bound by that agreement. I would think that's the case without researching it further.
Any other comments, questions?
I just want to say that there's no question that Ohai's in desperate need for affordable housing. I think we're making this a lot more complicated than it needs to be tonight. I think we need to make a decision to support the fact that we need affordable housing. We've got parcels 10, we have parcels 11. We've got 17 and 18 that we need to look at. We need to get started on on staff looking towards People Self Help to put a proposal together. We've talked about this and talked about this ad infinitum. It's time that we do something about it. It's a very important issue for our community, and we need to get started on it.
Yeah.
And keep in mind that when it comes to this deed restriction, we're talking about a court and that kind of stuff. Well, nobody ever complains. It's never going to be in a courtroom. So I just think we're making it more difficult than we really need to.
And I think that the purpose of tonight is just to direct staff to work with People Self Help and see and develop the concept review. We don't necessarily need to figure out the surplus versus the DDA. We'll determine that at a later date. But I think it's important that, it seems like the majority of the council is in agreement to start those concept reviews. Councilmember Clapp?
First of all, I would have to agree with the comment from the gentleman earlier that under the current water restrictions that we're imposing upon citizens in this community and the level of the wells, as well as the reservoir, the uncertainty of when and if this drought will end is, makes me not want to proceed with anything at this point. To expect our citizens to decrease the use of their water and then add an additional burden, I think is unfair to them. And it just is going to add an increased burden on the valley as a whole. You draw water out of wells and then there's less water for taproots for roots to reach, so trees are dying. And then you tell us you can't water from above either. So it's not all about us. It's also about the environment. So I'm fundamentally opposed to proceeding at this point with anything. But that being said, if, if the rest of council does want to proceed, there's a couple of things I would like to say. If we're going to give away this land, which is what we're doing, we're giving away a city asset. The land is owned by all the people, 7,800 people in this town own this land. And we're giving it away for this project. I think that it's really important that we maintain as much control over the project as possible. And I'm opposed to giving it away incidentally. I don't think we should ever give away assets. It's an asset with value. We have roads that are in desperate need of paving and other infrastructure that needs to be taken care of. And to take the citizens' land and to do this and leave the infrastructure in the condition it's in is, to me, irresponsible. So again, to back up, that being said, if this council does want to proceed with this, I think that we should go with the disposition and development agreement. So we do have some more control over the project. Its density, potential requirements, that there are indeed the extra services going to be available in these projects that they say they're going to have available in some, but don't necessarily have them if they're not required. So we need to have homework center. We need to have potentially career guidance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, as part of the development agreement. I don't, and that green standards should be met, that solar panels need to be required, that native planting needs to be done, et cetera, et cetera. As far as 10 goes, the property 10 is, how many people walk back there? It's beautiful back there, isn't it? It's an oak woodland, isn't it? And we have very few oak woodlands left in our town.
It's here collectively.
Well, it's, there's oaks back there, too.
It's not really a woodland.
It's open space and would you keep them in order, please? I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, if you could please allow councilmember Clapp to finish her thoughts.
It's a beautiful place back there. We don't have a whole lot of open space anymore. And also, this land was donated generously by this family with the covenant that it would be kept open. And I loathe to, and I know these kinds of things can be reversed into court, and they have been done. We reversed the drinking thing in Libby Park. But reversing drinking in Libby Park is a whole lot different than taking open space and turning it into a housing development. I also believe that we should have proposals from more than one developer. I don't think that we should proceed with anything unless there's an open RFP. It's only appropriate. I don't think that it should be just restricted to one affordable housing company. the other thing is, I have scrawled all over. I apologize. And one of the things that I think has been brought up as well earlier is the matter of no guarantee of local occupancy. And I think that's, that's really the honest truth. There's no guarantee of it. And so if we're, if we're going to be building this, thinking that this is going to be taking local people that live here now and they're going to get these units, there's no guarantee of that at all. No guarantee. And to say otherwise is deceptive. It's just, it's just not, it's just not true. I think that's pretty much completes my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just have a couple of comments to reply to what councilwoman Clapp said. There's no guarantees in anything that we do. There's processes we can put into place to assure the process as much as we can that the people of Ohai are going to be the ones that benefit from this. This is not a housing development. And if it was a private housing development, I would not be for it. This is an affordable housing development, which is needed for the health and the benefit and the welfare of our community. The development is going to make our community a better place for all of our citizens. Not just the ones that, that happen to benefit from the, from living in the affordable housing. But for the health and vivaciousness of our community, we need affordable housing. Affordable housing is an important part of any community. And to call this a, to say that it's been restricted to only be a open space is just, it's not right. It's, nothing in the deed restriction that I've seen says it has to stay as open space. It may have said that it can only be used for government, government use. But I think this is an absolute viable, responsible use of government property. It's an important part of our community. It's, these are people that need places to live that can't live here now. Or people that are being forced out of town. You know, sometimes you got to sit back and look at what's important. The people of our community are the important assets that we have, not a piece of vacant land that's going to sit there unproductive when we need to use it for people. And I think that that's so important for everybody to realize. Because affordable housing is essential, and we need it.
Well, I think staff has its direction that we would like to proceed with, with concept review. Yes, councilmember Clapp?
You're right about affordable housing being an important element in this community. And one of the ways that it's being eroded is through vacation rentals. So I think this is sort of a two-pronged issue. If we're going to be building more housing, there's two things. We need to make sure that there is very strict controls, that none of this housing gets turned into vacation rentals. And if it does, the people lose occupancy in the affordable housing units that are built. And also, we need to address, move forward with the vacation rental issue that we're dealing with right now because it's been clearly stated that a huge percentage of those rentals, as Dale Hanson has said, have been removed from the market, from vacation rentals. So it's a two-pronged thing. We're also going to have to make a decision if we really, really, truly care about affordable housing, we're going to have to decide to say we are not going to allow vacation rentals here in this town because those are the kinds of homes that are being taken away from rentals.
Well, I want to bring us back to this subject. And I want to make sure that we proceed and we do close. The reason why I allowed for a lot of discussion just between council and the, and our residents because it is an important issue in my mind. And as we go on, a lot of the elements that councilmember Clapp has raised, there are valid concerns, but I think that in this community, we could address them. We have a lot of intelligent and smart, engaged residents that we could come up with the solution. And let's not forget that data shows that we've actually decreased in population. We're getting older. A lot of people, we are very conscious about water usage. So at the same time, it does show that the amount of people that if we do decide to build affordable housing, isn't going to increase our population dramatically. So let's, again, we're going to start with the concept review and we're going to go from there. And as we go on, I think we'll be very cautious and work with People Self Help, but has a lot of experience with this issue. And we'll proceed in the, in the right process. And councilmember Wirick?
I just want to make sure staff is fully comfortable with the direction, and they need no further specificity.
Well, it's always, there's always more clarity if you make a motion and vote on it. You could do that, or we could just go off the conversation.
A motion would provide some useful clarity, I think.
Okay.
I'll make a stab at the motion. I want the motion to stay that we confirm the, the council's commitment to provide affordable housing for our community. And that we would like staff to, to investigate the feasibility for lots 11, 10, 11, 17, and 18. And is 11, too, on here? Is, where this-
Yeah, 11 is also two.
And then as the second part of the motion, to ask staff to begin working with People Self Help to generate a concept review for both the potential rental units, as well as the sweat equity units that councilman Haney suggested with regard to those parcels. And at the same time, direct staff to investigate the process for how to get, to deal with the deed restriction on lot 10. With the idea that council's preference is the lot 10 for the use of this.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Wirick?
Yes.
Clapp?
No.
Laura?
Yes.
Lots?
Yeah.
Haney?
Yes.
And just for-
could take this up at your August 25 meeting and still be fine.
So we'll table item seven to a further date, either in August, maybe August 25?
Your only meeting in August right now.
There's one August meeting, right?
Yeah, on the 25th, unless you add a special meeting.
So I'll move that, to that meeting, August 25. I'd rather move item number four after number six, if that's okay, the council, to see if we could, if anybody has... So I'll move item four to after item six, and we'll proceed with the legal services agreement with Calatuno, Heinz Smith, and Whitney.
Mr. Mayor, I think we can dispose of, I'm just going to throw it out. I think we can take care of item six in 15 minutes or less, which would then allow us to do both those items. I don't think we're going to get to item six if we take up five first.
Okay, so you want to propose moving item six before five?
Yeah.
And then, okay, so if that's okay with the council, then I will proceed with item number six, possible participation in Upper Ventura River Groundwater Sustainability Agency. And I guess we've heard the presentation. Is there any further report from staff?
No.
Any questions for staff?
No, I think that the presenter did a pretty good job of explaining the situation, but I'd be glad to answer any questions.
With the decision, if option number one was decided as a start, is that irrevocable? In other words, can you drop out?
The rules aren't really set yet. I think that they would want you to participate financially.
At the start?
At the start, yeah.
The question is, are we really committing, you said, over $150,000 over several years? Initially, you're talking about $50,000 divided by six, they were estimating. The question I have is, would we want maybe look at the option of participating at the front end, see how it went, with the option of, if we don't like the way it's going, not committing to the long run? I'm just asking.
So here's my understanding of what they're going to do. They're going to form a JPA, which is a legal entity. And so the initial discussion that's going to occur apparently over the next several months is going to be, what does that look like and who's included? So if your desire is to participate in that discussion, I'd just say, make that your motion, and we'll say, you know, we haven't decided if we're in it for the long term, but we want to be part of the initial discussion of how the thing's made up. And then whoever your delegate is to that group can report back to you as they go along.
So that would be option number two?
No, it'd be a separate option.
It'd be, I think, study option number one.
I just have one question with regard to that. Has there been any financial contribution? I mean, at this point, I think that they're going to want to divvy up the $50,000 before any further discussions take place. So we're making a decision that we're going to become part of that $50,000.
I would say so, yes.
Yes. And I just, personally, don't see what benefit it gives us.
I agree.
I was wondering if it would be more appropriate for Golden State to be our representative?
Oh, God.
But, I mean, I know I'm bringing it up, but in another sense, I'm comfortable having Casitas there, and hopefully the buyout will happen sooner than later, and they'll be representing Ojai. That was my...
We're not the water purveyor.
Yeah, Casitas is there.
Yeah, Casitas is already there. I was kind of leaning towards option two for that reason, but I don't know how the council feels, because I feel if we're 15% and we don't have really any wells...
I agree.
Or, I don't, I agree with Mayor Protenblatt, we have no...
Yeah, I think there's some other issues involved that we might want to keep an eye on, though, and so maybe option two is the way to keep an eye on things.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I...
These are two separate basins.
Well, but there's a good bit, we have important institutions in this aquifer. In other words, the sustainability will affect the high school, the hospital, what gets built in terms of that land next to the hospital, all the Vons, and all of the houses behind Vons. So it's a part of our city. And sustainability is not just wells, as we brought, but I agree, I don't, I just think we ought to have a seat at the table as a, for input without the voting status.
Well, but right now, we get no water from it. And we have a hospital, and we have a high school, and everything, we have nothing to do with it, none of that basin. Assuming that the buyout goes through, then we're going to be, Casitas will be our purveyor, and they're going to have a seat at the table.
Right.
I just don't see the benefit to us getting involved in it at all. That's just, that's just the way I feel.
Even as a committee member.
Yeah.
I don't agree, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to sit in stone on it.
Yeah, I see a benefit with one of us participating. I personally, it's, I know Casitas does a great job in thinking about the Ojai as a valley as a whole, but sometimes we're not, we're not as involved with each other, and sometimes there might be an issue that pertains to the city that we could advocate. But I don't know, I just think that as precautionary reason...
That's where I'm coming from, precautionary.
Yeah, I think it's smart for us to get at least involved in some of the communication.
My take on it is, even if it's 10% of part of our jurisdiction, it's still 10% that we should have a say in. And what we're doing is by not being a member of it, we're delegating that to someone else. So we might as well let them annex that side of the city and take it down to Ventura, or give it back to the county. That's all I'm saying, is I just think we're given a little bit of our responsibilities. That's one thought. The other thought is, hopefully Casitas Municipal will purvey in the lawsuit, and we do have a person on that board. So the short, the short term is what, $5,800?
Well, option two would be nothing. No money. For option two.
And we could still participate.
But no voting.
No voting.
No voting, no money.
Yeah.
And really, it's not, there may be a certain portion of our community is on top of the aquifer, but we're not getting any water from it.
Right. Unless we put some wells in, huh?
There's a mill or thorium.
Well, once they create this, once they create this, they may say...
Wells are then an option.
I think the thing that concerned me the most, the fact is they're creating this agency, and they don't even know how much water they're pumping out of that aquifer right now. It just, I just can't believe that.
That was a point I brought up, I think everything should be metered, personally.
Well, that's thus what Jerry Brown did, which should have been done decades ago.
So I guess we're debating whether or not we have someone designated to be on our policy committee representative with no financial obligation, or not?
Yeah, I would go with option two.
Make a motion and see what happens to it.
Randy?
Yeah, I'm fine with number two.
You want to make a motion?
Oh, are you pushing me in that?
I'll make a motion.
If not, I was going to say, oh...
Go ahead, I'm fine.
I would, I'm just going to make a motion, see if it flies or not, that we participate as a committee member in the proposed Upper Ventura River Groundwater Sustainability Agency.
Option two.
Option two.
I'll second. Roll call.
Wyrick?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Lots?
No.
Haney?
Yes.
Motion passes. So I guess we'll hear back from them to see...
So I will contact them and advise them that you've selected option two.
Okay, great. Item number five, legal services agreement with Calatuno, Heinz Smith, and Watley PC designating Matthew T. Summers as city attorney.
So thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This was discussed at length at the last meeting, and there was a request for a number of revisions. We've tried to make those revisions, as is reflected in the red line version, and so we are available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from council to staff as far as the revisions go?
You know, I just had one...
Councilmember Haney?
I, you know, I had two concerns, and it's late in the game, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to stop anything from moving forward, but two concerns were, first of all, we never got an evaluation of an in-house attorney and a benefit package that we would be required to provide that person. We just never, that was never a part of the discussion. It was always, we're just going to outsource it, and I don't know when that occurred, you know, when that process took place in the city that we decided not to have an in-house attorney. So that's one thing that I think would be, Matthew, if this ever comes around again, that we'd be looking at how to bring someone of your skill set in on, as an in-house versus that. And then the second thing is, we never really had another attorney. We never had anyone else outside of us look at this contract and the viability of it. That's, those are my two concerns. I'm not going to stop the ball moving forward. I think we've done, I think as a group, we've done a great job on where we are to date, but I just, I just had to bring those two concerns up.
And I just have a different, I don't disagree with you in terms of having another possible agency look at this contract, I have nothing against that. But at the same time, I think we did mention possibly, we didn't look into it, but I think we did, that did come up for discussion. But if the council next time wants to look more into that, we can. But I personally think that outsourcing, we gain so much more. Mayor Protenblatt?
Yeah, just to put Councilman Haney's mind at ease a bit, there is absolutely no way that we could get the services, the expertise, the support, the staff, anywhere near the price that this contract calls for, if it was an in-house attorney. What you would find is that you just can't have the attorney, you have to have support staff, and that the in-house attorney for a small city like this would require a great deal of outside legal support, which would then cost considerably more than what we're probably paying for the whole contract here. And when you couple what you'd have to pay an in-house attorney with the benefits, and the retirement, health insurance, I think you'd be surprised how much more it would cost.
I don't disagree with that. Do we have, if we were to do this, do we have any past records of billable hours? Who was our last city attorney in-house? Was it Mr. Witters?
Mr. Fletcher.
No, nobody, there's never been an in-house that I know of.
There hasn't?
Never. Okay.
Councilmember Wyrick?
I just want to say thank you. I made a number of suggestions, it looks like they pretty much all were in here, and so what do I have to say anymore?
Thank you.
And to address your concern, I think that, you know, note that we are going to have an accelerated evaluation in three months, which I thought was important. And we, there's a 60-day termination if further information comes, you know, so we're not, you know, we're not locked in terribly long. And I just want to say that I had a one-on-one conversation with Mr. Summers discussing more of my concerns about the distinction, I guess it boils down to, between being a staff attorney and a city attorney, and expressed my views, I think, pointedly. And Mr. Summers has agreed, I mean, he signaled to all of us by email an intent to meet one with, you know, further one-on-one, that we can really express our expectations to him succinctly and specifically. I think that's really valuable, and I will repeat that the city attorney is the city's the client, and the primary expression of that client's wishes is the majority of this council, period. And always to keep that in mind, and not be the staff attorney. So I look forward to all of us expressing our expectations to him very pointedly.
And to speak to that, what Councilmember Wyrick was referring to is, my plan, once the contract is adopted, if it's so adopted, is to ask if each of the council members has some time and would sit down with me at some point when I'm already in, at the city hall on one of those days, to discuss where your views of my role, your views for where the city should be going, and how I can help you get there.
And we're setting up a process for evaluations, which is good, but I do want to iterate what Councilmember Wyrick said is the majority of the council. So it's important that we, as a whole council, do get together, and that we don't get into individuals, well, I said this, and again, there's a slippery slope there. I just want to make sure that, I know you're going way and beyond expectation, which is greatly appreciated, but greatly, I look forward if this contract is approved tonight. Any other questions?
So we're going to make a motion?
Do...
On authorizing the mayor to sign?
I will entertain a motion.
Okay, so we're going to authorize the mayor to sign the legal service agreement with Colin Tunel, Heinz Smith, and Watley PC, which designates Matthew T. Summers as city attorney, and Holly O. Watley and Scott Howard as assistant city attorneys.
Second.
Roll call.
Wyrick?
Aye.
Clapp?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Lots?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Thank you. Welcome. City Attorney Summers, not interim, assistant city attorney. We do have a few minutes left, and I don't know if it's the council's pleasure to dive into our goal setting.
I would rather not.
No.
If that's the case, though, I do need to get some direction on at least one of the commission requests that we got, which is part of that item.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make some general comments on that item, too. I expected, we didn't want to get into it, because it's that, but if you want to proceed and get direction from that, from that year...
So the Building Appeals Board made a request to get together with the Planning Commission and the HPC to talk about fences, walls, and hedges. And that's actually not within their scope, I don't think, because it doesn't have to do with the building code. Having said that, we have a process going called Neighborhood Planning, which is specifically looking at fences, walls, and hedges, and is specifically requesting that all commissions participate in that effort. And I think it would be a mistake to have one effort going in this direction on that topic and another, in another direction. So my recommendation would be that you direct the Building Appeals Board to work through that neighborhood planning process, and we could set up, we could talk with the consultant and set up some sort of process that's focused on getting commission input on those issues as opposed to just general broad public input, in order to be more close to what the Building Appeals Board is requesting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Clapp?
The Building Appeals Board is a board, it's not a commission. And I think to embrace it with every single thing is broadening its scope way beyond its original intentions. And I think we need to make sure that it just doesn't become this, another commission, just because, it just doesn't seem appropriate to me.
So, is...
Councilmember Wyrick?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make some general comments on that item, too. I expected, we didn't wanna get into it.
Okay.
But if you wanna proceed and get direction from that, from that year.
So the Building Appeals Board made a request to get together with the Planning Commission and the HPC to talk about fences, walls, and hedges. And that's actually not within their scope, I don't think, because it doesn't have to do with the building code. Having said that, we have a process going called neighborhood planning, which is specifically looking at fences, walls, and hedges and is specifically requesting that all commissions participate in that effort. And I think it would be a mistake to have one effort going in this direction on that topic and another, in another direction. So my recommendation would be that you direct the Building Appeals Board to work through that neighborhood planning process and we could set up, we could talk with the consultant and set up some sort of process that's focused on getting commission input on those issues as opposed to just general broad public input in order to be more close to what the Building Appeals Board is requesting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Clapp?
The Building Appeals Board is a board, it's not a commission. And I think to embrace it with every single thing is broadening its scope way beyond its original intentions. And I think we need to make sure that it just doesn't become this, another commission just because, it just doesn't seem appropriate to me.
So...
Councilmember Wyrick?
I'm sorry, I jumped in there. So in terms of the city manager's suggestion, are you against that in terms of what the, in terms of the complete streets, complete streets input?
I don't think that there's, that it's a part of the role of the Building Appeals Board to be involved in the community planning because it's about building appeals and it's broadening their scope into an area that is not their purview.
Well, just to repeat, that it's also the Housing Appeals Board. And they are, they have a responsibility of hearing appeals on anything involving a broad scope of issues associated with housing.
Yes, appeals.
And it just seems, if they're gonna be hearing appeals, I'm not sure what's wrong with the suggestion the city manager's making since there was the idea of soliciting input from everyone, why we wouldn't do that?
Because they're not a commission.
I'm not saying that they should be lead or anything like that.
They're not a commission, they're a board to hear appeals.
And to give advice as we ask for it.
No, I don't wanna ask their advice on this matter.
Okay, well, I do, so...
Council, Mayor Pro Tim Blatts?
Yeah, the Building Appeals Board isn't just there to hear appeals, it was never intended to be that. It's helped us get through the building code, it's helped us get through the, or the second dwelling units. There's a number of things that they've helped us get through. And I think walls and hedges and things like that very well could be under their purview. I mean, presumably, there could be something there that would require an involvement of the building code. And they might even get an appeal.
Isn't that more the Planning Commission? Isn't, are we sort of, are we kinda mushing up the Planning Commission role in with the Building Appeals Board? This broader, this broader arena that kinda slipped in when this whole board was created, it's not in the, the way it is written in the state code, it isn't even written as, in other duties as assigned. It's for, it's supposed to be for appeals and somehow it's morphed into this, you know, second Planning Commission. And to me, it's just, it's adding more burden to staff, it's taking more of their time, it's getting more cooks in the brew and I just don't see the value in it.
I understand your point of view and I, it makes sense that if we were to proceed with having a joint meeting with the HPC and the Planning Commission, it could potentially go out of their purview, but as Mr. Clark said, that through this neighborhood planning, we are asking for everybody's input and I think the Building Appeals Board has been an asset to the council in terms of looking at issues. I think that we should take advantage of that or any commission that has valuable input. And I don't see anything wrong with what Mr. Clark is presenting in terms of looking at these hedges, fences, and walls.
So specifically, the BAV hears appeals on housing issues, yes? What, is there...
That's the original intent.
Building code.
Building code.
That's the original intent.
There's one further thing that the Building Appeals Board has given jurisdiction in the municipal code, which is potential amendments to the Title IX of the municipal code, which is the building code and its associated administrative provisions, if referred to by the building official.
Right. Well...
Official asked for this?
Betsy, I do agree with you on this, that I see what their true responsibilities are, that they have an opportunity to start reviewing a lot of those issues concerning the building code, that they could just go through that code and start at the top and number one and start reviewing this. And they could spend a long time, you know, doing that, which I think would be a better use of their time. Having said that, I'm gonna go along with what everyone else here wants to do in it 'cause the more people you have looking at something and we get more advice and input, the better we are as a governing body. So that's the other part of me, but I do agree with you about mission creep. I agree with you about that.
With that said, neighborhood planning, I would like to see...
You agree about mission creep, but you're gonna just keep letting it creep.
Well, no, it's...
On this issue...
We have a special project.
Yeah, on this issue, I can understand more eyes and more opinions and views on these specific issues because it is a big one here in this community, these fences.
It's been going on for quite a while.
That's all I'm saying to fences, but I am saying that I agree with you on mission creep and that's bringing the Board of Appeals into planning commission responsibilities in areas of accountability.
So I think in the future, we may, we should consider bringing it back down to its original intent.
Well, again...
Instead of having it become an arm of the Planning Commission.
Well, it's actually, yeah.
I think, I think the distinction is they have an appeals function and then they have an advisory function at either the building officials' request or at our direction through the building official.
Right. And Planning Commission only deals with zoning. The Building Appeals Board doesn't, doesn't deal with zoning. The Building Appeals Board deals with the building code and Planning Commission doesn't deal with the building code. So they're not an extension of the Planning Commission, they're two separate distinct things, but they overlap in some respects. If you, if you're zoned to have a single-family residence, well, you gotta build it. Well, does that mean that planning can only look at the zoning and say it's allowed and then Building Appeals can only look to see if they've been denied a permit? Well, that's why we had them look at the second dwelling units because we were dealing with issues involving the building code. So I don't see any reason not to have additional, you know, heads put together on something as important as our community planning, neighborhood planning.
I just wanna suggest and encourage the council, I know it's late and it's past 10:30, but it's gonna be really important for us to look at these next set of priorities. We have done, I think, in a reasonable time, we've gone through a lot of these items and I personally would like to prioritize this next few months because we actually don't have as many meetings as we think. We have, we'll have one in November, we'll have one in December, the holidays are coming up, we have summer recess, so it's important for us to direct staff with clear direction on what we want done. And furthermore, I think that some of these issues could be, or some of these items could be dealt pretty quick. And I would also invite the council to look at those to see if we could actually prioritize those as pretty efficient.
Well, in an effort to diffuse councilperson's claps immediate frustration, can I bring up the vacation rental matter?
Certainly.
Because we did have a specific steps defined from the workshop.
Right.
One of them was getting further community input and designing an appropriate solicitation of that input, getting a certain synopsis and report. Do you anticipate being able to call the task force, the two of us, in soon? I know you were gone last week to look at that input. I think that's a high priority.
Yeah, I do, too.
Personally, I think keeping to move on getting that input and I would hope that you could call the two of us in maybe this week, if you have time.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna touch...
To talk about that next step.
I'm gonna touch base with Mr. Alexander tomorrow and find out where he is with the report and then as soon as the report comes out, I was thinking I'd pull you guys together.
Yeah, and please don't proceed with the solicitation of additional public input until you consult with the two of us.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And those are, I consider those an ongoing issue. So those are obviously still happening, I'm talking about possible next items that we could look for in the next couple of months.
And do we have a timeframe for the evaluation of the vacant building ordinance?
On that one, the evaluation is on my desk by one of our real estate guys. I haven't had a chance to read it yet, it's on my list to do tomorrow. We'll have it out to the council and the Building Appeals Board by the end of the week and I believe it'll be put on the Building Appeals Board's, a discussion of it on their next agenda to look at later this month. And I think the plan...
21st.
Is on the 21st of their meeting. And I think the plan is to have them look at the issues and then make a recommendation. Council, of course, will have to adopt any suggested amendments to the ordinance.
Are we right now in the goal status?
Well, we are, we're proceeding with it, I'm trying to wrap it up.
He's trying to wrap it up.
I'm trying to, 'cause there's, again, it could take another hour. But I'm gonna, if that's it, we'll, we'll, we'll table this item to next council meeting. I know we did start before 10:30 on this item, so we technically could finish, but...
We squeezed right in, but with that, we could not do non-possessment.
Yes, we started before 10:30. I'm gonna, right now, reconvene as Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency and I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Second.
Roll call.
Wyrick?
Aye.
Clapp? Laura?
Yes.
Blatts?
Yes. Yes.
And then I'll adjourn at Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency and reopen as a council. We do have a closed session item, performance evaluation as city manager, I don't expect the report after that and we will go into our closed item.